...drastically, so we want to make sure we're voting for what we intend, no matter what we believe.
So councilman, the answer should be, but we're going to have time to look at it, the answer should be, everything that's in blue in front of you is new, anything not in blue was in front of you previously.
Okay, but there's also a difference between those things in blue. There are some things that are clarifying language for what we voted on, and there are some things that are new that we hadn't seen before.
Very good.
Right? So that's what I'm saying. And I'm asking you to highlight those two different items, so that we're very clear. Oh, we voted on this, but they're just clarifying and giving us the legal language versus this is a new idea that the council hasn't voted on.
Easily done.
Okay, thank you.
Insisting we should start small and grow as needed, District 7 Councilmember Richard Alarcon says he's disappointed with what's currently before council, and brings up the issue of elderly care facilities.
Members, I came today ready to vote on what I thought was going to be presented. And what I thought was going to be presented was a thousand-foot buffer on residential uses, which was our last discussion, and had an ordinance been drafted, it would have included a thousand-foot buffer on sensitive uses. I introduced that motion, and I'm passionate about it, and I will not vote for anything that has anything less than a thousand feet on sensitive uses. Secondly, I thought we were going to come in with a variety of amendments on the issue of how close to residential. And I'm very disappointed that we're eliminating the anything except for a budding, which could be ten feet or a thousand feet, depending on what is next door. But I hold that the principle is, how close should it be to someone's house? How close should it be to someone's home? And I'm saying five hundred feet is a reasonable separation between medicinal marijuana and a home. I would like to add that I'm fine with the language that includes exemptions for licensed residential medical or elderly care facilities. That is not on your map. But there are hundreds, if not thousands, of those facilities that would qualify. So we keep focusing on the acreage and the maps that don't even include the number of elderly care facilities or licensed residential medical. And that's going to expand the pool greatly. So I think I want to move in encounter to, with all due respect, because this is a very personal decision that each of us is making, and I hope we all respect our opinions on this. But I, with all due respect, would like to introduce a motion that we leave in the thousand-foot buffer around sensitive uses and add a five-hundred-foot buffer for residential.
Using a specific area located in Hollywood as an example, District 4 Councilmember Tom Labange asks staff about an existing marijuana collective that may be forced from its current location.
Let's take Hollywood Boulevard from its inception at where Virgil and Hillhurst meet, and go west to Vermont. Right now, there is a, on your map, a establishment on that part of Hollywood Boulevard. Now, that is it a C-zone, but is it adjacent to residential?
Yes.
No.
What that shows is it's a collective, it shows it's a collective that does not meet the distance requirements. It does meet the-
Okay, I got it. So why do you think that one doesn't? I know, I don't know of any school right in the area. I know there's a fire station up the street, 35s. I know there's the art gallery. Why do you think it doesn't? Because it's in our zone?
You know, it meets the distance requirements, but what we did was, we assumed that that, because it met the distance requirements and separation standards, that it could stay at that location. And then, because there's an ordinance standard that says you can't be within a thousand feet of another collective, then we subtract out any of the commercial acreage. So you'll see on that map, there's a slight amount of commercial acreage that falls just outside that thousand-foot buffer.
Believing the city as being as compassionate as possible, and looking for clarification of Mr. Alarcon's motion, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl asks staff how the motion would affect the proposed medical marijuana ordinance.
What does that do to your maps and to the thing? I just want to know what that motion is that he put out.
My understanding is that the motion would be a thousand feet around sensitive uses and five hundred feet around residential uses. What our analysis showed is that that is the most restrictive scenario of the six scenarios that we analyzed. And what it would mean in terms of the existing 137 registered collectives, four only could stay in their current location, and 133 would have to move.
I see, okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to know what it is. I'm not going to talk much today. Today's a bad day for me. Fifteen years ago today, my partner died of AIDS. And I know what he went through for eight years before he died. And if it wasn't for marijuana, he wouldn't have lived those eight years. It's a shame he didn't make it long enough for the drugs that came along that kept people alive. But he died, and this is his tie, and I wear remembrance of him. I think our nation's discussion on this issue has probably run the clock, and I'm looking forward to leadership out of Washington to change the federal law, first of all, which is a draconian law. I think our city is trying to be as compassionate as it can under Ed Reyes's leadership, who's put a lot of time and energy into this. And frankly, I've toured some of our clinics, I've gone in with my staff, I've looked at situations there. And I hope the day comes when enlightenment happens, so we don't throw the kids away in jail like we have, when Schwarzenegger gets up and talks about, we have to spend more on education than jails. Well, we have to change those dumb laws that have put these people in prison to begin with. My last point is, I hope my colleagues and I can come to some kind of a compromise, so we can deal with the big issues of the city, which is the budget and our future as a great city. And I hope to God we can regulate and tax, so we can get a revenue stream and get beyond where we are today. Thank you.
Please open, are people clear? Okay. We're bifurcating both elements of Mr. Alarcon's. His first element, he is saying, is to take out the definition that residential is a sensitive use, but nevertheless, to have a five-hundred-foot buffer from residential uses. Okay? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, eight noes.
Okay, that does not pass. The second piece, excuse me, we've got a number of votes to get through. If I can ask your indulgence, please. Our second one is on a thousand-foot buffer for sensitive use. Please open the roll. This is a thousand feet from sensitive uses, so which is-
Yes.
Correct. Which right now still includes residential, because that was the last motion that we took. I understand that, I'm just, where we left business off, we had defined residential as a sensitive use. So Mr. Alarcon's first piece, which was to take that away and to make a five-hundred-foot buffer, failed. So we're still at the same place. So Mr. Alarcon, did you want to, did you want to say no longer a-
It wasn't my intent to include residential in a thousand-foot.
Okay. Well-
I just wanted to-
So then this is to take out residential-
Per the standard-
And to have a thousand-
For the standard definition of planning, which does not include residential.
Not to include residential in a thousand-foot-
But you're taking out residential, right?
I'm taking out residential on the-
A thousand-foot buffer from sensitive uses, which is no longer includes-
But I want sensitive uses to be a thousand feet.
Yeah, and take out residential.
Okay. We'll make that as part of the bifurcation. Yes, it's that to take residential out as a definition of sensitive use and to create a thousand-foot buffer for sensitive use. Mr. Zine?
And just one more time, can we get the definition of sensitive use for everyone's clarification?
Sure.
Councilman, I'm on page eight at the bottom. Here are the defined sensitive uses. I'll read them. School, public park, public library, religious institution, licensed childcare facility, youth center, substance abuse rehabilitation center, or any other medical marijuana collective.
Thank you. Okay. Folks, clear? Ms. Hahn, did you have something on this? Ms. Hahn, did you have a point of clarification? I saw you on the field. Okay. All right. Please open the roll. So, please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, six noes.
Okay, that passes. So I think Mr. Reyes's motion, which was the same thing, but with five hundred instead of a thousand, is not necessary, or do you want to, I mean, if we vote on that, it would contradict passing that previous one, so now that that's been bifurcated, it's a thousand with not residential. Okay? So we, it would be, I think, out of order to vote on the second one. Okay? So that will be the instruction moving forward to the city. Yes, what we wound up doing is the residential use does not count as a sensitive use anymore, and there's a thousand-foot buffer around sensitive use.
So, your Los Angeles City Council has voted to cap the number of medical marijuana collectives to 70, but allows about 137 collectives already registered to stay in business. Council also voted to prohibit collectives next to residences. The matter will return to council on Tuesday, January 19th, when the decision to keep collectives 500 or 1,000 feet away from sensitive use locations will be made. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall, or the San Pedro City Hall, and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend, the January 15th, 2010. On behalf of Dave Brown and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Now that our granddaughter lives with us, life sure has changed. I thought we were through raising kids. How am I supposed to keep up with this job? But now we're starting all over again.
But I don't like it like that.
Well, this is the way grandma makes it. I'm not sure we can do it alone.
Hi, welcome aboard.
Dash Services operate in more than 28 communities in Los Angeles.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
January 22nd. If I could ask the following council members to please join us as soon as possible. We have a couple of members excused today. Councilmember Weezer, and Councilmembers Smith and Zine and Hahn are excused to leave early, but only Mr. Weezer is excused right now, so for the rest of the council, please make their way down. Councilmembers Cardness, Hahn, Corretts, Kokorian, Reyes, and Smith. If you'll please make your way down as soon as possible. Councilmembers Kokorian, Hahn, Corretts, Cardness, Reyes, and Smith. Thank you very much, and we'll begin shortly.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, January 22nd, 2010. We are here in the John Favreau Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome our special guests and members of the public that are here with us in council chambers this morning, some of whom you'll be meeting shortly. And I want to thank those council members who are here on time. We do have a quorum. Just for the public, a couple of points of information. One is that all of our agendas are available online at lacity.org. Those are made available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance. They're available in person as well through our city clerk's office, and on the city's website at lacity.org, there's a wealth of information about our city departments. We are encouraging folks right now to call in those potholes, so as soon as we get some dry weather, we can begin with our special task force to begin filling them. You can just call 311 or navigate your way through the city's homepage to our Bureau of Street Services page as well. For this meeting, we are broadcast live on Channel 35, as well as rebroadcast each evening through the city's cable system, and available online, as I mentioned, with the live streaming webcast of our council meetings, and past council meetings are archived there as well. We are also available through your telephone for your convenience by calling 213-621-CITY. You can listen into our council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll, we'll begin the meeting.
Alarcon, Cardness, Hahn, Weezer, Corretts, Kokorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If we can go to the first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Labange moves, Mr. Alarcon seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda?
Items 1 through 3 are items for which public hearings have been held. The report for item 1 has been submitted and distributed to the council. However, a motion is required inasmuch as one of the recommendations has been submitted without recommendation.
Okay. Special for Mr. Zine on that? Mr. Parks?
Number 1 for Mr. Kokorian.
All right. And Mr. Zine is number 1 as well?
Yes.
Number 1? You called special number 1, right?
Yes.
All right. Next items, please.
And that leaves number 2 and 3.
All right. Anybody wishing to call 2 or 3 special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on those 2 items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 4 through 9 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
The cards are available for the public here and in Van Nuys and San Pedro, in our council chambers there, for anybody who wishes to be heard on those items. Do we have cards on any of these?
There are cards on 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Okay. And Mr. Parks?
We have 8 and 9 special, and we can combine them, and also, we'd ask from out of order, as soon as the Garcia family comes in the chamber.
Okay, we will do that as well. So that, we'll call that entire section special, and we'll come back to that after our presentations. I want to thank everybody who is here for our presentations as well. Each Friday, we make presentations to mark notable occasions and people and dates here in Los Angeles, and this Friday is no different. We have 5 presentations today. Our first one is going to be Councilmember Corretts. Are you ready, sir? All right, then I'll recognize Ms. Hahn, who I'll be joining for our first presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn and Mr. Garcetti.
Same spine as the podium here.
Same here?
Yeah. Snuck in first. I'll give Ms. Hahn a hand, shoot. Exactly. You can, it actually gets archived online, if you send it to your family. We've got you guys a link, and you can see where to- Ms. Hahn, would you like, would you like a USS Los Angeles?
No.
She's smart, she was smart in politics, and now, please, you go ahead, you lead in.
Oh, okay. Colleagues, good morning, and I'm joined here by Council President Eric Garcetti, and we're here to commemorate the retirement of the USS Los Angeles naval submarine, which will be decommissioned tomorrow at the Port of Los Angeles at 11:00 a.m., I believe is the ceremony. And I'm very glad to welcome Commander Harrison and Executive Officer Lieutenant Commander Daryl Lewis, who are here with us today, as well as Navy Day's Los Angeles Board Member, Grant Ivy. On Wednesday, I didn't see you on Wednesday, but I know you were aboard. On Wednesday, we welcomed the USS Los Angeles to San Pedro and to its namesake city of Los Angeles as it arrived here as part of its final voyage. Councilmember Garcetti rode up from San Diego aboard the sub to commemorate its final journey. It's a great honor for Los Angeles to host this weekend's historic event. It is also a real honor for me personally, and I mentioned this in our announcements on Wednesday, to be a part of the decommissioning ceremony, because the little human interest angle to this is that my father, County Supervisor Kenny Hahn, along with our then-mayor Tom Bradley, were part of the commissioning of the USS Los Angeles in 1976. So to have that full circle within my family, that I will be part of the decommissioning, is very interesting, an interesting angle of this ceremony tomorrow. The USS Los Angeles holds special meaning for San Pedro- The USS Los Angeles holds special meaning for San Pedro. The mast and two anchors of the first USS Los Angeles stand today as a memorial along Harbor Boulevard and serve as a great historical reminder of our maritime history. The USS Los Angeles has been stationed on the Pearl Harbor waterfront for over 32 years. During this time, she's completed 17 deployments in the Pacific. She is also the leadership of her class and has brought many important capabilities to the U.S. Navy, including many wartime functions, reconnaissance, and intelligence collection. The ship has outlasted and outrun her competitors and set new standards for submarine design and operations. Because of these outstanding and historical achievements today, I am introducing a special resolution to declare January 23rd, 2010 USS Los Angeles Day in the city of Los Angeles. Over the years, the USS Los Angeles, along with its crew, has played an important role in keeping our country safe and out of harm's way. I know that the past and present crew members will take with them countless memories from their time aboard the USS Los Angeles. And in turn, that spirit of submarine will forever be infused with their dedication and character. I want to now invite Councilwoman Garcetti to say a few words and join us in presenting Commander Officer Harrison with this certificate on behalf of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Han, and thank you so much for your strong support of Navy Days and your strong support of the United States Navy always and consistently, and it carries on a family tradition, I know, for you. The USS Los Angeles, and Councilwoman Han alluded to this, is actually the fourth ship that is named for our great city. The first was a merchant vessel in World War I. The second was the third airship, actually, was built in Germany. It was a Zeppelin, the ZR-3 USS Los Angeles. And the third was a cruiser in World War II. But the fourth is by far the most significant ship that has borne the name of our city, because as Councilwoman Han alluded to, it is the lead ship. You see, whenever there's a new class of ships that are built, the first one becomes the defining name for that class. So as you see, and by the way, it broke from the tradition of attack subs being named after sea creatures. This was the first one that was named for a city and began that tradition. So whether you see the USS Cheyenne or the USS San Juan, other ones, they're all named after United States cities, but they are Los Angeles-class ships. To me, it's a fitting metaphor for our city, because our city has always been best in class. It has been a place that's attracted the best crew. It has been a place that has stood for innovation and strength, and the most amazing opportunity that I had to be able to go on this last voyage of the USS Los Angeles, which before Grant got involved, it actually never visited Los Angeles before, 2 years ago. It had been in Long Beach, but that doesn't count. It had been, never been to the city of Los Angeles. And the extraordinary crew, led by the skipper who's behind me, Commander Harrison, was nothing but the utmost professional personnel that we see in the Navy. These are men who go under, go away from their families for months to defend our freedoms and to make sure that we have a Navy and armed forces that can ensure all of our freedom in this country. It is something that should make us all proud, and Councilwoman Han, when it visited in 2007, gave the ship the same flag that is behind our President Protem up here and up here, our city flag. And I think it was one of the proudest moments of my time in public office, when I was up with the captain while we were going through the waters. For the first 2 hours, we had to stay on the surface, and as you can appreciate during this weather, it was rather choppy waters, but to see the city flag flying atop the ship as we cut through the Pacific Ocean made us all very proud, not only to be part of the United States, but to live here in Los Angeles. So I want to thank them for an amazing time, that they showed all of the guests that were there. I want to thank Grant, who Ivy has just done an amazing job at supporting the Navy, not just here locally, but nationally, and congratulate this crew. They still have a journey before them to go up north to Washington, where the ship will be taken apart, but I know Grant and all of us are lobbying hard to have a piece of that ship come here to Los Angeles, and I know Councilwoman Han will be our lead champion on that. So congratulations. Thank you for over 3 decades of making our city proud. You have made us proud, knowing that you are representing our city. God bless you all, and God bless the USS Los Angeles.
Thank you. Yes, I believe they're going to allow us to keep the sail. I'm actually lobbying for the whole ship. I think that submarine, after it's been declassified, certain parts of it, would be a great attraction down at the Port of Los Angeles.
Next to the lane.
I think that would be really a wonderful place for the USS Los Angeles to have its final resting place, would be right in Los Angeles at the Port of Los Angeles. But that's another fight. So Commander Harrison, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we want to present you with this resolution.
This is a recent ship, originally.
Yeah, I know.
And Ms. Han, before you complete that, Mr. Labange would like to say a few words?
Madam President, thank you. Commander, Councilwoman, Council President, all of the team, Grant, this is a wonderful part of history, and I'm proud of you, Eric, for serving in the United States Armed Forces and the Navy and the Reserves. I'm proud that you got the opportunity to ride from San Diego. Janice, what a wonderful context that your father and Mayor Bradley then christened this ship, and then you're here to receive it, the decommissioning. And that's so special about life, you never know where you'll end up. To all sailors around the world, we thank you for your service. And Commander Harrison, I would say that I had opportunity to meet the USS Los Angeles then-representing Mayor Riordan in San Diego some years ago, and Commander Rubenstein was the commander, and he, they just instituted no smoking, I think, on submarines, but he had a cigar. And I said, "How come you're still smoking in that kind of way?" And he said, "Well, I'm the commander," you know, and he was the only guy who could do that. But he was a great guy and a great leader, as each and every one of you is. This is wonderful history. Janice, if you can't, just get the piece that says USS Los Angeles, and we'll put it somewhere if you can't get all of it, but it would be a great addition, and God bless the Navy. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine.
Acknowledge the United States Navy and the wonderful work that they do. I had a discussion briefly with the members of the ship, the crew, members who do all that work, and the leaders of that ship that make sure it gets that proper destination, and all the dedication you folks have. Discuss where you started out in education, and it's interesting that varied educational backgrounds but joined the United States Navy and that proud commanding of that ship and the leadership of that ship. I know my colleague Greg Smith, who serves with me as a reserve officer in the LAPD, has a great love for our country and the military. I hope you're going to speak, because his son's in the Navy at this particular moment. He's a member of the United States Navy, but for all you folks do, we appreciate it. I know that Eric Garcetti is going to be an admiral someday. He's working his way up the ladder in the Naval Reserve, but that dedication that you folks have, we appreciate it here in the city of the angels. And decommission that ship, hopefully we can have a piece of it for our city, for our city hall to remember. And Janice, your dad, the proud member of the council, the board supervisors, and your brother, who's now a judge, the family history, to have that proud history, and you to stand there with those Navy folks. But whether it's the Navy, the Army, Air Force, Marines, the Coast Guard, National Guard, whatever, all those folks help keep America safe. So congratulations, Sylvia, and thank you for what you do to keep us the free country that we are. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you, and I think Dennis for mentioning, my son, who's been in this chamber before. By the way, his ship, USS Carter Hall, was called up last Thursday to Haiti, and he's been there now for a week. And we released the efforts, even though he's just gotten back from Iraq, he's been here less than a month, they called him back down there and said they need him. That's what Navy does, they pull up anchor and weigh anchor when they have to and go wherever they need to go to be our forward assets in the world, and we're very proud. And I'm really upset with the U.S. media, who's not really covering what the Navy is doing down there. You guys were the first on scene with the Marines, and we have an ex-Marine Colonel over here, and John McCree. You guys were the first on scene, and they're not covering, I don't think, nearly enough what you guys are doing down there to help the poor people of Haiti. But I'm a proud father of a Navy sailor right now. My great-grandfather and my mother, my wife's side, was actually on the USS Vestal, which was the supply ship tied up next to the USS Arizona on December 7. And they didn't sink, but the Arizona did. So the Navy is a very important part of our life, very proud of what you do. And my great dream, and I told this to Janice a few years, my great dream is to see the USS Los Angeles tied up next to the Lane Vicarate, a World War II Liberty ship, down in our harbor as a great opportunity for all Angelenians, to be very proud what the Los Angeles was, as Eric said, the first and best in class. And I think there were 40-some Los Angeles-class submarines, sir?
62.
62 U.S.-class, Los Angeles-class submarines in the world, and what a great opportunity we have to bring this back and keep it here forever. So once they decommission, we'll be a part of it. Let's work on that, and I hope you'll write a letter in support of that, so that we people of Los Angeles will ever remember this Los Angeles, because all we have are the previous 3, there's a couple of local parts down there. We need that whole submarine down there. So Janice, anything I can do to help you on there? God bless all of you, thank you. I've got to say, I was Air Force, I'm sorry, I'm the black sheep of the family, but my rest of my whole family's Navy, so proud to be a Navy family, sir, and congratulations to all of you, thank you.
Mr. Cardness?
I don't think we get enough opportunities to thank our men and women in service, and certainly for such a unique and incredible service of submarine ships. Those are the kinds of things that, I know as a kid, I was always fascinated with submarines, something about them. But at the same time, not only is it fascinating, but the service that you render, not only to our country but to the world, is underappreciated, I think, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you. And also, I may have misunderstood what Zine was saying. Councilmember Garcetti is admirable already, not that he's going to be, he is admirable already. And Ms. Han? Ms. Han, I was wondering if you were going to invite them to bring this vessel all the way to City Hall, because with these 100-year reigns that we've been having, I think they could have made it. Now, that would have been a journey that nobody would have ever expected, a little bit more fun than usual, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you, on behalf of all the people of Los Angeles, and also Eric Garcetti, thank you so much for your service as well. And Janice, Han, thank you for assisting and bringing this wonderful presentation to us, so that the people of Los Angeles could be reminded again about the men and women in service and all the service that's rendered. And even though it's retiring, nobody can ever take away all of the wonderful things that they've done and the protection that they've served, not only for our country but for the world as well. So thank you for bringing this presentation.
Thank you. And before we let the commander say a few words, I just wanted to also give a shout-out to the Cabrillo Beach Yacht Club. You know, there's a lot of logistics when a ship like this comes into port, and the Cabrillo Beach Yacht Club was there to hold the opening reception and have offered, you know, their brand of hospitality to the crew for their entire stay here, and we welcome the commander and the crew, they're going to be visiting, they already have been visiting different spots in and around Los Angeles, so we hope that they have a great time here. So Commander, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you very much. It is indeed a great honor to actually be here in the city of Los Angeles for our final decommissioning. It's a rare, rare opportunity for a submarine, when it goes into deactivation, to actually have the ceremony in the city, in its namesake city. We are on our way from Pearl Harbor to Puget Sound Naval Shipyard for our final inactivation. It is, it's not a, it's a sad thing, we think, when they deactivate a ship. You know, 33 years of proud service, it's something that we can all be proud of, because even 33 years after the ship was first commissioned in 1976, the ship is still just as relevant now as it was back in the 70s. And it's a real tribute, I think, to the American leadership, the American engineering teams, the shipbuilders, that continue to update and make the ship technology just as advanced now as it was back in 1976. We completed our final deployment in November of 2009, and we provided the same support to the operational commander as the newest ships in the fleet. The missions that we provided were anti-submarine warfare, anti-surface ship warfare, intelligence collection, all the same missions that the newest ships in the fleet are providing throughout the entire fleet. The ship was originally supposed to be decommissioned about 3 years ago, but again, thanks to the great, great engineering technology, the ship's life has extended, and now that we're actually finally taken up for final inactivation, we're all, you know, we're great, it's great to be in Los Angeles, but it's for a ceremony that we're all kind of sad to be doing for taking the ship out of service. Now, one last thing I'd like to say about, you know, we have a lot of great technology, but the technology would be absolutely nothing without the fantastic people that we have aboard the submarine service. I think that some of the people that we have in the Navy and the submarine service, I think they're some of the finest Americans that exist out in our country today. Some of these kids that come in are some of the, they're 18-years-old, they don't have any life experience, but we are able, the Navy and the submarine force are able to turn these young kids into professionals at the age of 21 in a mere year. They're driving a submarine, something they had never imagined doing just a few years before that. And the entire, and the entire, everybody on board the ship is all volunteer, and every single person has dedicated their country, and you can sleep better knowing that we have some great Americans out there who are watching after all of us. We dropped through dismay, there is the USS California that is coming online in just a few years, the California is under construction, it's of the new Virginia class. That ship is probably the most technologically advanced submarine or warship in the entire world. That ship will be online in just a few years, and I hope to carry that great legacy of Los Angeles on to the USS California as she comes out to the Pacific as well. So again, thank you very much for the honor of this proclamation, and we'll certainly take it proudly back to the ship and display it next to the original one, back when the ship was first commissioned.
That's cool. Thank you very much.
My name is Grant Ivy with the Navy League, and the Navy League of the United States was formed in 1905, and its purpose is to support our sea services and to educate the public about our Navy and to constantly remind that our great nation is great because we do have the sea power out there. So from the Navy League, we'd like to thank the city of Los Angeles for their hospitality, the Port of Los Angeles, and Cabrillo Beach Yacht Club. So you don't need to be in the military, like you actually have to be a citizen to join the Navy League, so anybody out there that'd like to do that, we'll welcome you.
Invite everybody to come to the ceremony on Saturday.
And ceremony on Saturday, yes.
Yes, yeah, everyone's welcome to come down to San Pedro, birth 94?
46.
46, 94. 11, I think it was 11:00 a.m., and for the ceremony, everybody's welcome to come down there, it'll be quite an occasion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han and Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation will be Mr. Corretts.
Well, Madam President and members, on December 31st, 2009, John Fischel retired from his post as President of the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles, a post which he held since 1992 with remarkable diligence, dedication, character, and wisdom. The Jewish Federation is the cornerstone of community, of service, and of activism, not only for the 5th District, but for the city as a whole, which is illustrated by the fact that every member of this council and the mayor has signed this resolution. So much of John's day-to-day work over the past 17 years is hard to quantify, but let me just say, when he came to the Federation, it was in the last great recession of the early 90s, and there was a big question of whether the Federation would remain solvent and would be able to continue. And he's credited with the stellar leadership that kept the Federation in, kept it solvent and safe and continued to this day. He initiated any number of terrific programs. My personal favorite is the New Leaders Project, which mentors and involves young Jewish professionals in leadership activities, ranging from lay leadership on philanthropic boards and nonprofits to involvement in running for political office. And during the challenging times for our community, from the 1994 earthquake, to the 1999 shooting in the North Valley Jewish Community Center, to the call for support for Israel during the Second Intifada, and during Israel's war with Hezbollah, John has been a marvelously steadying and resolute figure of great courage and dedication. And that's why we wanted to bring him here and thank him for his tremendous 17 years of work. And John, I wish you a very successful retirement, and that you spend much time with family and friends, but we also know that you'll continue in... and friends, but we also know that you'll continue in a number of community causes, and we look forward to continuing to have the opportunity to work with you in those.
And there's a number of--
Thank you for your great work.
Number of your colleagues would like to say a few words.
And certainly we'd like to ask Councilmember Parks to have the first opportunity, since he co-authored this effort.
All right, Mr. Parks, if you will.
If he's in the right spot.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to stand and also give my words to John on his retirement. Probably more so in the police department than in the council, we've had a number of issues that we worked together, primarily the youth center, the valley shooting. I think we've had a couple of cases where someone's desecrated a cemetery, the number of incidents that dealt with swastikas on buildings. But one of the things I always appreciated, the fact that, the ability to work with John, and also the community to get the word out, to calm the community, calm the fears that people had about some of these outrageous incidents that occurred in the community. And we could always rely on that relationship, and so I just want to say, you know, great retirement days, look ahead, there's life after, and so just enjoy yourself. And thank you so much for those seventeen years, because you've dealt with a number of changes in this community, and you've dealt with a number of issues that were very, very relevant, and really, things that at the time could have been very volatile. And so appreciate your effort and your organization's effort.
Mr. Rosendahl.
John, there's no such thing as retirement, of course, but I've known you for thirty years, and I have watched you, with your leadership skills, turn the Federation into one of the most viable, giving, interactive group in America. You know, the Federation has been the backdrop to more community service, more giving than anything I know in this great city. That's why every year I've never had a problem dialing for dollars, and I've never had a problem with my show bringing you on, or talking to you about people who should come on the show, so that we have the balance and we have the integrity of what television should be all about. You've been a resource to me when I did my television shows, but more importantly, you've been a resource to the whole community. You know, one of the parts of the Jewish community that I admire the most is the commitment to each other, the giving, the education, and the caring. In fact, there are more social services connected to people through the Federation's activities than anything I know. And you know, the discipline that you put into it, and the commitment that all kinds of people have made through your leadership, when you would say, would you do this, would you do that, would you connect this, would you connect that? And you put it all together in such a dramatic way, that you've been a true blessing to all of us in Los Angeles and throughout the nation. Thank you very much for all you've done for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, John. We've spent many hours together at many events, many causes, many issues, many concerns. I just want to congratulate you in retirement. When I heard you were going to retire, you're too young to retire, you've got so many wonderful accomplishments under your belt, whether it's the Super Sunday, or all the other activities that you've been involved in over the years. I would congratulate you, wish you well, and it's been a pleasure working with you on all the variety of challenges that the community faces, and you've been a partner in all of them. So, congratulations in retirement, and I wish you well into the future. The future's always bright, as Bill Rosendahl said, you never retire, you just go from one event to the other. Bill from television to this, me from law enforcement to this, so the cycle continues. But the best wish is to you in the future, John.
Thank you very much, Sean. I also would like to add my congratulations, and a thank you for taking the Federation to a higher level of public service and being a vital part of our social service fabric in the city. And back to you, Mr. Carretts.
Again, thank you, Madam President and Members, for this recognition, and we're so glad that John had the opportunity to gift us with his leadership for the last seventeen years, and congratulate him on his retirement.
Let me thank all of you here in the council chamber today. Eighteen years ago, when I had the opportunity to become the professional leader of the Jewish Federation, of the second-largest Jewish community in the United States, I knew I was taking the helm of something that was important in the voluntary sector, and I knew I was coming to a beautiful city and a city that's very dynamic. I think during the tenure that I spent with the Federation, both the good times and the not-so-good times, some of which have been mentioned in the remarks a moment ago, whether it be in the aftermath of the Northridge earthquake, or the shooting at the North Valley JCC, I have had the opportunity to work with extraordinary leaders, many of whom are in this room today. I've traveled with many of you, I've worked together with you on public policy issues, and it has been my privilege to be part of a city that is dynamic and pluralistic, where the voluntary sector and the public sector work together for the benefit of all the citizens of our wonderful city. Thank you very much.
I believe our next presentation will come from Mr. Parks, Council District Eight.
Today, colleagues, we're going to honor the National Black History Challenge Bowl Championship Team, and I'd like to ask Javion Francis, James Johnson, Jesse Harris to come up, and I also would like to ask their family members who are here, and to also come up and be here in support of them. So, come up to the podium. Take that digital tag off, you're going to mess up your photo. Get up close. Colleagues, one of the things we wanted to do today is to honor these young people that are students at Audubon Middle School. We want to recognize also the Hundred Black Men of Los Angeles National Black History Challenge Bowl Championship Team. The national championship team consists of three participants, James Johnson, wave, first James, Jesse Harris, Javion Francis. All three of these students put countless hours in studying and preparing for this competition while still maintaining outstanding grades at Audubon Middle School. They were also local winners of the Black History Super Quiz Competition, helped for the Young Black Scholars, the educational program for the One Hundred Black Men of Los Angeles. In June 2009, Javion, Jesse, and James, the sixth graders, captured the Junior Division Challenge Bowl for the Hundred Black Men of America competition in New York City. They participated in the competition as part of the See Your Future mentoring program, a mentoring and educational activity of a hundred black men of Los Angeles. These young men won a decisive victory over their opponents from Madison, Wisconsin, bringing the Halen Trophy, aptly named after the national organization's founder and current One Hundred Black Men Los Angeles Board Member, Dr. William Halen of Los Angeles. To win the competition, Javion, Jesse, and James mastered black history by studying Leon Bennett, Before the Mayflower, Benjamin Quarles, The Negro in the Making, George G.M. James, Stolen Legacy. The students were coached by Michael N., and also Eddie Amua, and Jesse Lafayette, in the See Your Future. The mentees defeated six teams to capture the Halen Trophy. Today, we want to honor them and city council, to wish them well in their future, but also acknowledge the great efforts they had in capturing this particular championship, and we want to give them a public recognition in hopes that they will continue their educational achievements and continue as they move on to high school and college, to show that the city council certainly identifies these achievements and hope that they will continue. So, I have a certificate for each one of them. James, where's James? And Javion.
While you're doing that, Mr. Parks, I'd like to add my congratulations on behalf of our fellow colleagues, to these young people, and the families, and the support that they have been given from not only their families, but one hundred black men, and recognize that they are role models to their peers, and role models to our community, and their accomplishments are very impressive. Congratulations.
All right, you're going to say something. Well, thank you for recognizing us. We worked hard to win this. It was importantness, and it was fun. We enjoyed our time in New York, and we were glad that we won the competition. It wasn't easy, and that's pretty much it. Just thank you.
Thank you. All right, you get to say something.
I'd like to thank one hundred black men of America for giving me this opportunity, and I'd like to thank my mom and my family for supporting me, and it was a really good educational experience as well. And, yeah.
Thank you. All right, come on up there.
I would like to thank the one hundred black men for the opportunity that they gave me. I'd like to thank my family and friends for the support, because it was real hard. We didn't have that, we didn't have a lot of time to study, but we made it through. And I would also like to thank the coaches, Ms. Jordan and Ms. Riera.
Good morning, Council. Donald Lancaster, President of One Hundred Black Men Los Angeles, thank you for honoring these young men today. It was an extremely prideful moment when this trophy came back to the city of Los Angeles, knowing that the founding president is a member of our board. I'd like to take some time to acknowledge a few people who are here with us. Their coach, Michael N., who is now in graduate school at Loyola Marymount. Mike, if you can stand, he did an excellent job at coaching these young men. Latrice Jordan, who's a member of our staff for over ten years and helps administer the YBS program, Young Black Scholars Program, is also in the room, and we'd like to acknowledge her work as well. Our dynamic executive director, Patricia Riera, really made sure that all the wheels were churning and got these young men to New York, made sure they were in bed at the right time, and made sure we won. So, I'd like to thank Board Member Curtis Frailing for being here today, Councilmember Parks, Councilwoman Perry, who will be honored by us this year for our annual gala. Thank you.
Thank you very much for an inspiring presentation, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We're going to go in the back.
Our next presentation, give them a big hand, will come from Mr. Rosendahl.
This is a very historic moment. Standing next to me is Joe Weider, right here, and right next to him is his lovely wife. And let me just say, when I became a council member, in my district is Venice Beach. And when I went to Venice Beach, and I've been going to Venice Beach actually for a long, long time, there is the bodybuilding area over there. And I've done a lot of programs there, and as I was doing these various projects, I got to hear about the living legend, Joe. And I want to read a little bit about his background. For those of you who don't know who he is, he is truly a living legend. In fact, our governor inducted him into the California Hall of Fame just a couple of weeks ago in December. And in fact, our governor started bodybuilding and weightlifting at Muscle Beach, and one can attribute his career to Joe, because Joe is the one who gave him his self-confidence, his sense of self-worth, and a difference. When we exercise, we try to get our energy together so we can deal with the day. Some of it is for mental reasons, some is for physical reasons. But the whole bodybuilding experience, the whole experience of exercise, frankly, that we all must do, in fact, in part, came from Joe. Joe believed so much in this that he institutionalized it over the years, and I must say, sixty, seventy years. So, if I could just read a little bit about him, I think you'll all register with him, especially if you've worked out this morning, done any stretches, have any bells at home, or go to the health club yourself. It's all because of Joe, because he really tied it together. Joe is the co-founder of the International Federation of Bodybuilders, and creator of Mr. Olympia and Miss Olympia Contest. He is the publisher of several bodybuilding and fitness-related magazines, most notably Muscle and Fitness, Flex Men's Fitness and Shape, and is the manufacturer of a line of fitness equipment and fitness supplements. If you ever used those supplements or ever used those machines, this is the man who put it all together. He was born in Montreal, Quebec, before founding this, and he published the first issue of Your Physique magazine in 1936, when he was seventeen-years-old. Lots of other magazines we can go through, but in 1983, he was named Publisher of the Year by the Periodic and Book Association. And this line here, folks, "Joe, the once scrawny, poor Jewish boy with a seventh-grade education, began his bodybuilding and publishing empire with seven dollars at the age of seventeen, after building his own barbells out of junk car wheels and axles." I mean, this is really historic. Most of us don't realize that the history of the whole exercise movement is right here with Joe. On Labor Day, I had the pleasure in 2006 to be with our governor, and Arnold, who was a protege, presented him with the Venice Muscle Beach Hall of Fame Lifetime Achievement Ward. Standing here are some other folks that are best friends of his, and I just want to just mention Joe Wheatley here. Joe, Joe's been the guy at Muscle Beach, and he puts together more programs, but it's all been inspired by this man sitting next to me. And one of the things I want to read from this certificate is the one that, of course, makes me very, very happy. "Joe Weider, through his selfless acts of decency, compassion, and dedication to the well-being of others, has continually shared his good fortune with others by making charitable donations over the decades, which have benefited children, students, seniors, law enforcement personnel, neighbors, and cities throughout a common thread, benevolence to weave through the fabric of our society." God bless you, Joe, for all you've done for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and I believe Mr. Smith would like to say a few words.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Weider. He may not know this, but ten years ago, I opened a $10-million YMCA in my district, and we opened up our first exercise rooms for the public, and we bought Weider equipment for that. And you donated a lot of the equipment, the company donated a lot of the equipment, as well as gave us some great discounts. So, in our YMCA, we had a lot of Weider equipment for our people when it was. I just want to say publicly, thank you for the five thousand people a day that now go into that YMCA. It's one of the biggest in the country, and thank you for being a leader in the field, and then opening the company and supporting a great organization like the YMCA. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Alarcon.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, what a thrill. I know you wouldn't know it by looking at me, but when I was a kid, my dad used to tell me about Joe Weider, and I think it was a dynamic tension, and was a concept that Mr. Weider was espousing. And I actually used to get magazines, and I understand that it wasn't just about weightlifting, it certainly wasn't, Dynamic Tension wasn't about weightlifting, it was about nutrition. And I just want to say that the northeast San Fernando Valley has the highest rate of obesity in the entire state of California. And so, when I look around, I just wish that we could do more to educate people about nutrition, and what they're consuming, and what it is doing to their body. And those things you were doing before I was born, and it's something that is much needed, so we want to thank you for your contributions, and thank you for educating even those of us who weren't tremendous examples of your work, but nevertheless who respected your work. We want to thank you for your life and for everything that you've contributed. Thank you.
Mr. Lavange.
Mr. Rosendahl, thank you for--
Mr. Rosendahl, thank you for bringing up an American icon, a world icon, a Canadian icon. What a special day it is for you, Joe. I'm pleased to see you again, and the work at Venice Beach over the years has created that iconic place. If I don't think it was for Muscle Beach, Venice Beach wouldn't be what it is. It really helped bring it up. So my congratulations to you and your entourage, and it's what's a fine day. Good job, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Carets.
Well, I just wanted to recognize, and I'm not speaking on this because I'm Mr. Muscles Actually, I just wanted to acknowledge you for something else, which is, I believe you were the, the first to have a column on HIV and AIDS in a straight magazine that was not related to the gay community, but dealt with sports and athleticism, and got the word out in a very important way. And I think that was very courageous. And in addition to all the good things that you've done and you're being acknowledged for, I think that's, that's one that, that I noticed and many others have noticed, and wanted to thank you for that as well.
All right, back to you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, before Joe speaks, on a personal note, my brother Frank, who is the oldest of us eight children, was a scrawny guy, and he really had to reflect on himself. He followed you every step of the way. He got the magazines, he got the weights, he worked out, and became a very strong, powerful guy. But you were his inspiration for both mental and physical health. Thank you personally, Joe, for that.
Not only that, but live longer, too.
That's right, that's right. There you go.
Well, you heard my story, but I didn't only practice weightlifting of, of contest. I always preached good nutrition, getting rest, getting healthy outdoors, and play, have fun, because you cannot develop a good body unless you do all these various things. People used to think that bodybuilding and exercise was silly. I remember when I began publishing at the age of 17 or 18, everybody thought I was crazy. The medical profession says, "It's no good. You're going to get hurt. You're going to hurt yourself. You're going to get sore backs. You're going to break your neck." Okay. Even psychiatrists say, "Bodybuilders look in the mirror all the time, thinking of flexing their muscles, becoming the, the, very catastrophic, which it was, and we were not looking at ourselves. We were looking at flaws in our figure, so we can improve upon it at all." I had to go through a lot of things, but I loved it all. When I started, I had a, I couldn't go to high school or college. We didn't have any money. I was poor. But I got a good job for working 80 hours a week for $2. Made me happy. I was pulling a wagon with groceries for delivery to various people who couldn't carry them. But all these years, I was very, very, very happy. The only time I'm not, not happy, when in 1972, I got my sciatic nerve attacking me, and that made it very, very difficult. But I'm glad that I contributed so much to make people happy, making them aware of good food, and good sleep, and good care, and love. Thank you very much.
God bless you, Joe. God bless you.
Thank you.
And your lovely wife, and everybody here. Thank you. Peace, Joe.
Good morning, folks. My name is Joe Wheatley. I'm a promoter out at Muscle Beach in Venice, California. I held that position about the last eight years. I just want to thank the city of Los Angeles for honoring such a great man, Mr. Weider. And I'd like to say on a personal note, my wife and I, who put these shows on together out at Muscle Beach, want to thank you folks for allowing us to do that. And I'd like to thank Mr. McCree, General Manager, Rick and Parks, and we look forward to many, many years to come to do a great thing out at Muscle Beach. And Joe, it's an honor here to be here with you today.
Good morning again, colleagues. I'm happy to be standing here for another Feline Friday, in which we offer up one of the beautiful cats from one of our six L.A. City shelters up for adoption. And today, we have a beautiful tabby, who you will fall in love with. Her name is Pauline, and she has a great personality. She's very sweet and very beautiful. And if you call my office at 213-473-7005, or come down to the council chambers, you can adopt this very sweet cat. Her ID number is A1075808. And generally, to adopt any animal from our shelters, you can start the process by calling 1-888-452-7381 to reach any of our six animal shelters. In addition, you can see photos at laanimalservices.com to view any of the animals online. So come down and adopt this very sweet kitten. Actually, let me take her out of her, her little carpet here, even though I'm going to get lots of cat hair on my nice suit. This is a gorgeous kitten, and very, very sweet. So come on down to the council chambers and adopt this little sweetheart. Now's your chance. Thank
Thank you, Mr. Carets. All right, Madam Clerk, our first order of business.
That takes counsel back to public comment. Our item's called special.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. Hey, there's a budget crisis, I hear. We're going to be considering it, and we did some calculations that over the next four years, based upon the CAO and CLO's numbers, we need about $1 billion a year. And by the way, we're already in more deficit for this, the current year. So, how will we get these? The CAO has put out a list of a whole bunch of things, but none of them seem to come up with an equivalent of $1,000 per parcel per year for the next four years. Is that our budget deficit, approximately? We have a real problem. How are we going to solve it? We also calculated, based upon the employees, that it would take roughly $25,000 to $40,000 each employee to balance the deficit. So, there doesn't seem to be enough money. And in fact, the CAO, when he was here before, mentioned the B-word four times, and now it's more actively being considered. But the mayor says, "Oh, there won't be any bankruptcy." So, I hope during this remaining parts of this year, and during the budget discussions with Mr. Parks, that we will be able to come up with an equivalent of $1 billion a year for the next four years. Doesn't seem likely. Oh, by the way, there's going to be a performance of the Occidental College and its entourage of opponents to the 710 tomorrow, at, beginning at 9:30 and going to 2:30. That is State Route 710 on file in Occidental College. Thank you.
Arnold Sachs. Phyllis Doherty, you will come after Arnold Sachs, so while Mr. Sachs is coming up, you can get yourself ready to come up.
Good morning. Thank you. Arnold Sachs. I'd like to address my public comments on Wednesday's meeting. Congratulations on the city council passing the no-smoking ordinance outside of public eateries. Councilman Smith, in his oratory, was concerned about the children that had to walk through the smoke. Councilman Cardenas, the simplicity of the ordinance really impressed him. So my questions would be, if you were that concerned about the children, why did it take four years of your office to put this item on the agenda? And Councilman Cardenas, the simplicity of the ordinance, the first question you asked regarding an eatery that combines a bar, you were wrong about the information. The lactating rooms that were on the city agenda, for 250 city employees or more, does that include the proprietary departments, the LAWA, the Harvard Division, and the Department of Water and Power? The number of facilities, City Hall, City Hall South, all the police stations would need them because they have more than 250 employees. The L.A. DOT building on Figueroa, and since it's a health benefit, shouldn't this fall under the jurisdiction of union responsibilities? And maybe when you put this into motion, you can get Al Bundy, because they did a program about lactating women on Married with Children. And finally, oh, also, shouldn't it also include the living wage ordinance? Because those people certainly would need to have that kind of benefit. And finally, the Hollywood project that was approved on Wednesday for the new development, are those permits vetted as they are with the sports, the sports and entertainment arena downtown L.A.? Because that's part of the Hollywood development area. I'd like to know about that.
Phyllis Doherty. Following Phyllis Doherty will be Sean Murphy.
Good morning, honorable members, and our little feline friend, Phyllis Doherty with the Animal Issues Movement. I want to ask you to please give a special thanks to the employees of Los Angeles Animal Services and Los Angeles County Animal Control, who did such a great job during the recent disaster. And I want to, and especially the employees at Northeast Central, Northeast Shelter, that were there 24 hours a day to take in any animal that needed care. I want to ask you to consider placing a special, either a little box on your website, so when you send out your email blasts, to remind people that are not in the disastrous areas to care for their animals in a special manner during these critical weather conditions. The animal services officers will be out picking up animals that have been drowned because they were on short chains, and nobody thought about the fact that the flooded conditions would not allow them enough distance to get out of the water. There are going to be animals that were forgotten to be fed during this time. They did not receive care. They did not receive shelter. So their work, the disaster for them, while it's ending for many, will just be beginning. I'm going to also remind you about people in general, that if you could put notes on things like the fact that cats get in places to hide during this type of weather, and if you have tool sheds or storage areas that you lock up because of the wind and the rain, you may be locking a stray animal or an animal that was just trying to escape from the weather. So please open them and give them a chance to get out if they're in there. Lastly, dogs, if there are dogs in the streets or animals that come to your homes now, we should ask people to treat them kindly, and please call Animal Control so they have a chance to get home. Just cannot make enough of a plea for people to keep their animals inside, and to ask you to please mention this in any of the notices that you send out during any time of special weather conditions, hot or cold, because these animals are totally dependent on us.
Mr. Murphy.
Good morning, Madam President, City Council. Uh, good morning, Madam President, City Council. How you doing this morning? Uh, try to stay driving in this rain. It's the worst rain since '82 and '83 in El Nino. To my, my advice to the people at home at Channel, Channel 35, please slow down when you're driving in the rain. It's, these cars are still zooming, zooming on our streets, especially when we had that hailstone, hailstone storm last night, 6:30. People, some car, I saw a car drive up so fast last night. Please, 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 slow down when you're driving in the rain. Also, I want to give a shout, I want to say hi to my new councilman, Paul Kocorian. I, he has a lot of, a lot on his plate. He'll do a good job for the city. I wish you luck, Mr. Kocorian. I've been coming to City Hall for three or four years now, Mr. Kocorian, and Wendy Gru was a good city council, and also, she was a good, and I miss Wendy Gru, and I hope you do a good, and I pray for you in the city. All right, Madam President, City Council as a whole, I usually go along with your ordinance, but, um, you know what? I'm not very happy with your ordinance. I, I got people that smoke. It's going to hurt, it's going to, I predict, it's going to hurt business. It's going to hurt business, and, and people won't come to the restaurants to smoke. It's, I wish you, we could, we should have thought, we should guys have thought of that. I mean, I have a lot of friends that smoke. They're not very happy about it. I get, somebody told me when I was on, coming down here this morning, I don't like, she said, "Sean, I know you go to City Hall. I don't, don't like the new ordinance." Please reconsider that ordinance, please. Thank you.
John Walsh.
Who are those women? What kind of hot committee just walked in?
Press telegram. Supreme Court justices say money is free speech. What kind of madness is that? See my money tie? It's now a free speech tie. See this money? It's now free speech. The, the Republicans agree with you. Let's destroy free speech. Hang us. Hang us till we're dead on free speech money. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Aalcon, I want to apologize for what the press has done to you. I want you to know that the 4 million people who live in this city don't give a damn where you rest your head. All we care is that you're doing a great job. Mr. Aalcon is doing a great job, and he just, and he took down the Pot Industrial Complex along with Mr. Weezer. HollywoodHighlands.com, 50,000 hits a month. HollywoodHighlands.com. Next week, we're going to give Mr., a plot outline for All My Children starring Eric Garcetti. It will be extremely controversial. Come, come now, and come next week. HollywoodHighlands.org. Next week, we will name the Motion Picture Theater in Hollywood, which has shown on a number of occasions child porn films. People are coming to Hollywood Boulevard to see this movie with their cameras, and they're shooting child porn images off a theater in Hollywood from a well-known foreign motion picture. We will give all the information. Now, there's a lot of kiddie porn tolerance in this city. We know that. Not with Mr. Cooley, and Mr. Cooley will be the next Attorney General of this state. HollywoodHighlands.org. Find out what's really happening.
Mr. Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you first to the city clerk. I hope, now we have a Westwood Neighborhood Council that's been certified, and although we have a budget crisis, we cannot put democracy on hold. So I hope that the city clerk will approve the money to have elections, because I certainly don't trust any neighborhood council board that's appointed by a corrupt system itself. Thank you. My name's Zuma Dog. We're celebrating, 2010 marks a decade of Zuma Dog in the city of Los Angeles. I made my debut on Howard Stern in 2000, then brought my public access show to City Airwaves, and now it's four years. I'm into my fourth year here at City Hall. And this weekend is very special, because now on L.A. Daily Blog, I stream live round the clock. I have round the clock streaming webcam from my new Venice Beach blogging video headquarters. So if you tune in right after this meeting, I'm going to go back to my studios, ladailyblog.com. Go to ladailyblog.com, and you can see Zuma Dog and Matt Dowd as we broadcast round the clock. And I'll be talking about the meeting today, and recapping budget issues, and describing where the city will be. First of all, something very important before time runs out, and I'm here to say I'm officially here to put this down on the official city record. The California Supreme Court yesterday ruled that it's unconstitutional to limit the amount of medication a medical marijuana patient can have. So to repeat, yesterday, California Supreme Court made a ruling that it's unconstitutional to restrict the amount of medication a medical marijuana patient may have. That means next week, you're going to have to reconsider a lot for your ordinance. And please, the people of Los Angeles, do not get upset with council because we have a com- a complete game changer, a California Supreme Court ruling. So they're going to have to reconsider, they will now not be able to restrict collectives as to how much medication they can have on hand. A serious game changer, ladailyblog.com.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew Dowd is our next and final speaker for public comment.
Okay, thank you. If you're just tuning in, me and Zuma Dog were on Venice Beach. We had permits from the city, we were vending these items, they sent LAPD down there and they hounded us off the beach. So we came in here to protest, and this city council has done every single thing it can in its power to squelch us, to try and avoid the issue, and not go into meaningful solutions for this whole Venice Beach thing. It's been going on for years, you've never won, you've never won. Paul Kukorian's over here, talk to him about Judge Dean Pregasin, how much he respects his rulings. Well, Dean Pregasin, he ruled that your 2004 ordinance was illegal, Michael Hunt was a victim of that, the jury of your peers awarded him $268,000, and now you're turning around trying to appeal that after Bill Rosendahl sat here in front of you all and said, we'll go with the federal judge, just like Paul Kukorian prefers. Can someone come and bring someone to clean up this podium? It's dribbled all over from one of those other speakers. It's not funny, though, we went to mediation over this Venice Beach thing, and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal, they said, we've read it all, we're the court, and we don't think it's going to change, so why don't you just pay the money and you guys accept the money? Because we didn't even want that much, that wasn't even enough. But here's where we're at, they said, we don't want to deal with this, drop the appeals and walk away. So we came back a week later, later and said, yes, okay, the court's right, and we'll go with them. You're hearing this, Bill Rosendahl? Can someone ask him? I'm allowed to say it like that, Eric, he wanted to get me.
As you know, please address it.
Please don't interrupt me while I'm speaking, there was nothing wrong, let the attorney do it, if anything, you're over your head already, I can tell. I turned down the road.
Again, sir, you're addressing the council as a whole, that's your second warning.
You kicked me out for 30 days, city council, it's another one. See, I'm prepared to do it, I've got the balls to do it, don't you understand that?
Sorry, sir, this will be your last, that's your last warning, items of a sexual nature are not protected speech, they are not protected speech, and if you'll make references to anything like that again, you will be banned again. Thank you, sir, for your, all right, our next speaker, that actually is our last speaker. So with that, we will go to items called special, and I think Mr. Parks has asked for items eight and nine to be called out of order, so Mr. Parks, I'd like to recognize you very, sorry, right away for items eight and nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask colleagues, we have two reward motions, and while I go through them briefly, I'd like to ask Captain Tengarides to come up, and also Lieutenant Dawson. Also, I'd like to ask the family members that are here, Michelle Jones, Arvis Jones, on the Lamont, Damon Lamont Jones reward motion, and I also understand we have family members on the Cesar Garcia homicide also come up, and that's Jendi Garcia and Jose Garcia. Colleagues, what we have here is two reward motions. On October the 20th, 2008, at approximately 9:00 p.m., Damon Lamont Jones was standing on the front porch, speaking with a friend, Douglas Lafloria, in the 600 block of 68th Street. Jones and Lafloria were approached by two individuals who, for unknown reasons without provocation, produced handguns and fired multiple shots at both Jones and Lafloria. Both victims were struck by the gunfire. Jones succumbed from these injuries, Lafloria was treated, but survived the injuries. And also, we have, on August 10th, 2009, approximately 5:50 p.m., Cesar Garcia, age 25, was riding his bike at the 600 block of West 81st Street, when he was approached by unknown Hispanic male. The suspect shot and killed Garcia and fled the scene. Let me ask Mrs. Arvis Jones to come up and speak in behalf of her son. Many of us know Ms. Jones as a grief counselor in one of our programs, the Center for Grief and Loss for Children, and certainly she's helped so many people for similar circumstances, had no expectation that her son would be victimized, and so I'd like to ask her to make a personal appeal in behalf of her family.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. As he said, I do this work every day, I've been doing it for years, working with families that have children, they have long-term losses, death, and never did I think that I myself would be in this position. I've been working very closely with Councilwoman Janice Hahn, I've done some things with Councilwoman Jan Perry, and we actually work in all of L.A. County, working with families that have losses. I work with the police department, I work with the mayor's crisis response team, going out on crisis scenes. But as he said, on October 20th, I had to go out on my own crisis scene, when my daughter-in-law, Michelle, called me and said my son had been shot, and we didn't know what the condition was at the time. I have since found out that it was a mistaken identity, because he was not involved in anything, he was a family man. Michelle was eight months pregnant at the time that he was shot. This is the daughter, this is a picture of their daughter that was born six days after he was shot. This is Anaya Patricia Jones. She will never know her father. We've gone through this year now, just trying to deal with all of our problems, I've been trying to help other families, but I said it's time now for me to help my own family and to get some relief from this. I work with young people every day to try to keep them out of gangs. The city attorney has funded a program I have in nine middle schools, trying to work with these young people to get them to stop this senseless killing. So I'm here today as a personal appeal, asking if you would give us this reward so that we can get some closure for our family and our loved ones, to find out exactly who took my son, Damon Lamont Jones, Sr., from our life. Thank you.
Michelle, would you like to make some comments?
Somebody knows something. If anybody, please, come forward, say who you are, tell on this person, make this person come to justice. It's not fair to me, it's not fair to my daughter. I would never be able to see my husband again. She would never know who her father is. So I just pray that whoever you are, please come clean, please come. I confess, this man didn't deserve it, and we don't deserve it either, so we just pray that whoever you are, whoever you know, whoever know who did this, needs to come clean, needs to come up and bring this to justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Jendi and Jose, would you come up and make your comments regarding the Cesar Garcia case?
I don't know what to say. I just know that he was a good guy, and he didn't deserve to, to pass away like that. All I want is the guy who killed him to, to get what he deserves, and that's all I want, you know? I can't talk anymore, sorry.
Jendi, thank you, that's, Jendi is the sister of Cesar. Let me ask, Jose, would you like to make some comments? Okay, let me ask Captain Tengarides in behalf of the department, would you make some comments?
Good morning. I'm here for two reasons. One, representing the police department, I wanted to come and thank Councilmember Parks and the entire council for the support that you give us. We generally don't come and ask for rewards for these types of crimes until we have exhausted all other means, because it's really important that we try and do it without the rewards, but the rewards certainly become something very valuable, not only to us as a police department, but to the families who have lost hope of solving those crimes by the time we get to this point. So thank you very much for your support in doing that. I'm also here as a friend of Arvis's, I've been working with Arvis for the last couple of years. Arvis came to me a couple of years ago and said, I'm here, what can I do to help? I work in southeast where there's a lot of tragedy, especially with kids, and Arvis has, for the last two years, worked tirelessly to bring hope, to bring resolution, and to bring help to primarily children who have been victims of trauma in South L.A. And so I want to do everything that I can, and that we can as a department, as a city, to help her now that she's in need of that. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much, Captain. Let me just say to the public, on the case of October 20th, 2008, involving Damon Lamont Jones and Douglas Lafloria, we have a $75,000 reward, we'd ask for any information on that case to be directed to Detective Eric Crossen or Detective Myra Kellum at 213-485-1383. And on the case of August 10th, 2009, with the death of Cesar Garcia, we'd ask that any information on that case be directed to Detective Bertha DeRazzo at 213-485-1383, and this is a $50,000 reward. Colleagues, ask for a i-vote on items eight and nine.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the family of Cesar Garcia, we offer our deepest sympathies. While I'm not as familiar with that case, know that the city council stands in full support of offering this reward, so that there can be, hopefully, an arrest and conviction of this person who was involved in this crime. To Arvis and Michelle, I do, am much closer to you, Arvis, I have worked with you for the last three years with the Watts Gang Task Force, and it, this is one of those that was just unthinkable to us, because you have given your life on a daily basis to being there for other people who have suffered this kind of tragic loss in their families. You are there to give grief counseling to children, and we know there is so much trauma and grief in our communities as a result of gang violence, and we know you have been there every single day doing that. It just seemed so incomprehensible that this would have happened to you. Michelle, we offer you our deepest sympathies, and may I say to both families, it takes courage to do what you are doing today, it takes courage. I know when I saw Arvis when I walked in, I said, are you okay? Are you ready for this? Because I know it just reopens up the wounds, and it would be easier, I'm sure, to stay home, and just sort of hope that it gets taken care of. But I will tell you, having you come and show a real face, a real family, to these statistics is important to the public. And hopefully, in these tough economic times, this kind of a reward is a lot of money for someone. And we hope that now is the right time to offer these rewards, someone, somewhere, we know, saw something, heard something, and we hope that this will be the incentive to bring them forward. So thank you for coming, we know it probably doesn't get any easier every day, but our hearts and prayers are with you, and we thank the good work of our detectives and our men and women in law enforcement who are working, I know, around the clock to try to solve these crimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. S.
Thank you, Council President, my heart goes out to both families. I know it's a very hard time, but I think in looking at strategies and how to get information out there, is the Spanish media involved, and how we are presenting this award, and making sure we can get more eyes and ears that are responsive to what occurs here? Can the detective or officer can speak to that? Are we being opportunistic with the Spanish media outlets, since we have such an array of populations and pockets throughout the city?
Well, I'm confident that the rewards, especially these that are in the neighborhoods that are involved, there's a large Hispanic population, and I know we get great coverage on the Spanish-speaking televisions. Our media relations works very closely with them, I'm working in southeast is the area next to that, and I have done a number of press conferences specifically just with the Spanish-speaking TVs. We also have, the police department has a number of Spanish-speaking officers, senior lead officers, that go out into the community, develop those relationships, and when this information gets passed out about the rewards, it will certainly be done in those neighborhoods in both Spanish and English.
Thank you, thank you, God bless.
Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak, first of all, in support of this motion for this reward, but more importantly, I want to thank the family for being here and for your courage in doing this, because we have speakers who come before us in council on the most mundane of matters, who feel nervous and frightened to speak from that podium. I can only imagine what it must be like to come here and talk about the grief that you're experiencing and the most tragic kind of loss that can affect any family. And I want you to know that what you're doing by speaking today is not just speaking in support of this reward in this case, you're also sending a very clear and profound message, I think, to our entire city, that this kind of madness has to stop, that we as a city can't tolerate this kind of mindless, senseless violence that takes people from us, from all of our families, from our collective city family. And so I want to thank you for having the courage to come here and to share the depth of your loss, so that all of us can feel that, can experience it, and hopefully can stand together as a city to say, enough is enough, this has to stop.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the families and to our police officers. We do have one more public comment card on this. Mr. Walsh, would you like to come forward on this?
Okay.
All right, with that, let's go ahead and take a vote, then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved, we'll send those to the mayor forthwith for this immediate signature. Thank you all very much. If we can take up item number one, please.
Item number one called special by Councilmember Zine.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Zine. We have three speaker cards, you want to take those speaker cards first, Mr. Zine, or would you like to?
I can only say here, momentarily, I have an army mission upstairs I have to do, so, Mr. Kukorian, we had this neighborhood council meeting, it was yesterday, I believe, no, Wednesday, and the concern I have, and we discussed this in committee, is it's costing us $1.9 million for neighborhood council elections, and we sent this forward from the committee without a recommendation. The Department of Neighborhood Council has a responsibility, the clerk has a responsibility, the clerk's process of doing elections is very strict, cumbersome, and costly. One of the issues is if someone contests an election on a neighborhood council, that individual, who's a neighborhood council resident, business, et cetera, under the proposal would have to pay $798.80 if they wish to contest the election, the recount fee, and then $2.28 for each ballot recounted manually. The concern I have is that neighborhood council folks are there without compensation, of the goodness of their heart, to do something right for the city, and if someone's going to contest an election, they're going to have to come up with $798, which is an incredible amount of money for someone who's not making any money, doing something good for their community. I'm working on a motion with Mr. Kukorian to address these issues, but I think since we're seven months into this process, we need to reevaluate the clerk's activity in running neighborhood council elections. The vision of the charter commission, which I and Janice Hahn were charter commissioners, was to keep it grassroots, was to not have a cookie cutter formula, and to make it simple and not complicated, and by no means charge people $7 or $8 if they want to contest something. So I think what we need to do is, since we're so far into this, is continue on it, and Mr. Kukorian and I are going to introduce a motion to try and rectify the situation, but the cost of $1.9 million to run neighborhood council elections in this budgetary situation is extremely expensive, which is one concern, and the other is what we're going to charge people who may want to contest. And now with Westwood, now there's 90 neighborhood councils, so it's a daunting task to run the elections. It wasn't designed to be cookie cutter. The municipal elections that are run are run in a very sophisticated manner for a variety of reasons, but neighborhood councils weren't designed in that formula, not designed in that process. They have to be fair and equitable. I think we've begun too structured with it, which really destroys the activities of having neighborhood councils run their elections, and I think the ones that I've spoken to aren't pleased with the processes taking place. No disrespect to the clerk's office, they run municipal elections, they run it in a very professional fashion, they run according to the laws, the state laws, the federal laws, the ethics laws, et cetera, but neighborhood councils are supposed to be rather informal and accomplish activities within the neighborhood. So I think that until Mr. Kukorian... So, I think that until Mr. Kokorian and I can come up with a motion that's going to work, we don't have any option at this particular time. But I do have reservation on this $798, which we did send from the committee without a recommendation. I just think having people who want to contest something pay something when they don't receive anything is really a slap in the face of those individuals that come forward and step forward on behalf of neighborhood councils. So, that's my comments on it, and Mr. Kokorian and I were in total agreement in committee, and I'm going to work with him, so hopefully we can do it. And I think I have a better light on it just because of the Charter Commission designed neighborhood councils as grassroots, non-structured, work with what the community wishes to work with. And South LA is different from East LA, it's different from West LA, it was different from the Valley. And I know we have challenges, but the fact is, it's supposed to be designed for that community, not a structured program as we by law have to have for municipal elections. And I want to commend the clerk for doing it in a sophisticated fashion, but $1.9 million for neighborhood councils, I think, is extremely expensive, but that's the cost, and I think we need to look into a better way to do it. So, that's my comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. My apologies, sir. Committee Chair would normally go first. I saw Mr. Zine's name on the queue, but my apologies, Mr. Kokorian.
I apologize, but I got a good go on that, so.
No problem. Mr. Kokorian, to be followed by Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Mr. Zine needs to leave. I do want to say that I agree with many of the comments that he's just offered, but I do want to put a little bit of a context on today's action. In 2007, the Neighborhood Council Review Commission recommended that the city clerk take over the administration of neighborhood council elections, and this council in December of 2007 adopted that recommendation. In 2008, the city clerk then moved forward with a pilot program, including 22 neighborhood councils. So, following that, we now are facing the clerk taking over 89 neighborhood council elections, possibly 90, beginning in March. Mr. Zine's comments, I think, are very well taken in terms of the overall cost of this and what we may need to do to reduce the cost, but we're now in a situation where we are facing elections and neighborhood councils that are beginning 60 days from today. So, what's before the council today is a report that doesn't deal with the overall issue of whether or not we should go forward in March, April, May, and June with elections, but rather a few discreet requests that the clerk had for ordinances relating to that administration, and also some recommendations that we had for clarifications and reports back from the clerk. So, first, the first issue that needs to be grappled with in terms of an ordinance is the grievance procedure that candidates or others may need to go through if there is a challenge to process. Now, this doesn't involve recounts, but rather process issues, who's eligible to vote, whether someone is in fact a stakeholder or not. The clerk has put forward suggestions for a potential ordinance to govern that. We've asked, we recommend that the city attorney be asked by the council to come back to us with an ordinance to do that. We've also requested that the clerk adopt a procedure by which residents of a particular -- if I may continue, Mr. President.
Actually, I have six minutes as the committee chair, so go ahead. Three minutes past that.
Thank you. We've asked that the clerk develop a procedure by which volunteer poll workers be permitted to work in their own precinct, in their own polling place, in their own neighborhood council, with the proviso that if there are challenges to bias and so forth, that that not be a basis for challenging, a challenge under the ordinance. Third, we've asked that the city attorney clarify in this ordinance that each neighborhood council can decide for themselves whether a term limit is appropriate for that neighborhood council. There's been some ambiguity over whether this council intended to allow or prohibit neighborhood councils from having term limits. We believe that should be within the province of each neighborhood council to decide, and that would be our recommendation to the council, to ask the city attorney to clarify that. We've asked for two reports back from the clerk. One, next week, we've asked the clerk to report back on whether the newly certified Westwood Neighborhood Council, which was just certified this week, can be included in the 2010 elections under the clerk's administration, what the feasibility of that is, and so forth. And then also, we've asked for the clerk to report back to us at the conclusion of the 2010 neighborhood council elections about ways to improve this process, because clearly, as Mr. Zine has expressed, and I think as we all feel, there are things that still need further development in how we administer the election of neighborhood council. This is an opportunity for us to learn from experience. Now, finally, the fifth recommendation on here is the one Mr. Zine primarily spoke about, which was whether there should be a fee for ballot recounts. The clerk has recommended a $795.98 fee. This is based on the same formula that's used for municipal election recounts. It's a cost recovery fee, and it should be noted that there were, I believe, in the 2008 elections, only two requests for recounts. This doesn't go to challenges to the election for other reasons. It's simply where there's a request for a recount of ballots. The idea is that just as in a municipal election, the party requesting the recount should be asked to bear the costs of that recount. It's a cost recovery fee. We didn't develop a consensus on that recommendation in committee. Personally, I believe it's appropriate that we have that kind of cost recovery in the limited circumstances of a request for a recount. And so with that, I asked, well, asked item five, because there was no consensus in committee, I will need to make that as a motion, and I'd like to ask for a second on that motion.
A second, then.
And with that, I would ask that the council move forward with the committee's recommendations.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to propose an amendment to this item. As you all know, as just mentioned, the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners certified the city's newest neighborhood council just this week for Westwood, and there was considerable disagreement in the Westwood community about the neighborhood council proposal, but there is agreement on one thing, that there should be an election for board members. As you know, the city clerk has proposed a schedule and elections plan for neighborhood council elections. Naturally, it doesn't include Westwood because the Westwood Neighborhood Council didn't exist until a couple days ago. It's been suggested that this would be logistically difficult to conduct an election in Westwood by 2010, but this would mean that the Westwood Neighborhood Council would be governed by a non-elected interim board for more than two years. I think this is unacceptable and undemocratic, particularly considering that this was a very controversial and divisive creation of this particular neighborhood council, and having an election soon would be a critical element to healing in the community. And I believe that the city clerk could go from 89 elections to 90 elections within its existing resources. And the report before you requested the city clerk's office report back on the issue of Westwood elections. I'd like to propose that we strengthen that by deleting the reference to studying the feasibility and instead directing the clerk's office to report back to the committee with its plan for conducting a Westwood Neighborhood Council election. Even if it wound up being slightly more costly, I think it'd be a big mistake to exclude this particular neighborhood council, and perhaps even the worst one to exclude, because we really don't want to have a non-elected board governing this particular body after the controversy and divisiveness that we've seen in the community around its creation.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rosenfeld. Is there a second on it?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rosenfeld, second. Mr. Rosenfeld.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Right now, this particular moment, over the next couple of months, you are very busy putting together the election throughout the city. All 89 and possibly the 90th will have to go through this process. In one of my areas, I have eight neighborhood councils. I have a Brentwood council that historically was its own creation, no affiliation, they did things the way they did things, whatever that was. Now there is energy building up to create a certified neighborhood council. I welcome it, and I'm delighted by it. What role will you have at this point, and would those elections be this April, or would there be more time to circulate, interact? What strategy do you think you might employ with Brentwood?
Certainly to be commended that another group of neighbors have come together to think over creating a neighborhood council. They would need to go through the neighborhood council certification process, which I believe is handled by Dunn, and would have to be approved by the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Once the certification is done, then we would fold into, we would fold them into our next series of elections for the neighborhood councils, which is scheduled for 2012.
So, what would happen between now, which is 2010, and 2012? What happens in that two-year period?
The city's ordinance currently states that neighborhood council elections shall only be run March, April, May, and June of even numbered years.
But I mean, here's a group that might get its act together, say, over the next six, eight months. Is there no special strategy we could use to get them so that they have the Brown Act and they have the interaction with the city agencies? Can we kind of take a breath and look at that, or is this the only thing we can do?
If you're asking, could this neighborhood council operate until the next series of elections, I don't see why that is not a possibility under the auspices of Dunn and Bunk. And if their bylaws were to contain a provision for an initial board, for instance, if you are asking, however, could the city clerk run an election for them until such time as council were to amend its ordinance and open up the period, we cannot administer any elections except April, May, I'm sorry, March, April, May, and June of even numbered years.
Okay, fair enough. Big question, of course, I'm sure, is the real question of it all. How much is this going to cost us when you consider where we are with our budget?
How much is?
From here until the elections are done and all those 89 or 90 certified councils? How much money? What is it costing us to do this?
The budget we were given to run 89 neighborhood council elections in the year 2010 was $1.9 million.
$1.9 million?
Yes.
Okay. And do you feel comfortable within that reality to keep them open, transparent, and really democratic?
We will do our darndest. Stretching that $1.9 is very difficult. We had originally come in with a much larger figure, as you recall.
Yeah.
Large components of our proposals needed to be cut out, so we were not able to give you the outreach that we had originally envisioned, the comprehensive vote by mail that we had originally envisioned. So, with the $1.9 that we were allocated, we are stretching our dollar and watching every penny.
Can you partner with groups like the League of Women Voters and others, good guy groups out there that are volunteers, don't cost anything? Can you somehow partner with them and kind of coordinate with them and potentially be able to be what you said, outreach? Because outreach is what it's all about, as far as I'm concerned. You want the democracy to work. People need to know what's going on. Most people don't know about neighborhood councils because they're morphed homeowner groups, for the most part, who take a deep interest in their community. Not that renters aren't there, it's just that the homeowner feels this empowerment, everybody should feel this empowerment, by the way. But to reach the non-homeowner groups requires outreach.
And if I can ask you to summarize, Mr. Rosenfeld.
Yeah. That's my comment. Can you partner with groups like the League of Women Voters?
I would defer that question to Mr. Kim of Dunn, since outreach is charged to his department.
Could you come up quickly and answer that question about partnering with the League of Women Voters and other civic-minded groups that have no acts to grind, no particular point of view, but are willing to be more effective with the democracy? That's it.
Okay, yeah, and then Mr. Reyes is next on the queue. Go ahead, you can answer that.
Please.
Bung Lian Kim, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And we have been charged with doing outreach to complement the administration of elections, and while we don't have a direct connection to the League of Women Voters, we've been working with many different organizations to get the word out about the upcoming elections, but I'd be happy to talk with the League of Women Voters to see what role they could play in the upcoming elections.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
I'm listening to this dialogue. I look at the agenda, it's supposed to be a communication report, and I'm hearing other issues arise from other parts of the city with some motions. My question is, one, the actions that are being asked of us, is it precedent-setting in terms of what's being asked of us to do, and given the motions that are on the floor? Because I don't know enough detail as to why those motions are being brought to us at this moment. I'm wondering if that's a committee issue, or is it something we should be discussing now? Again, I'm a little vague as to what is being asked of us, and whatever actions that we might take, is it precedent-setting? Please hold my, I can't hold my tight.
The two specific technical requests that the clerk needs a response from the council on are whether we can have an ordinance that will put in place a challenge system as, an election challenge system, just like we do for municipal elections. So, we would like to be able to offer a challenge procedure for the neighborhood council elections just as we do for municipal elections. And we would also like an ordinance that would set in place a recount fee schedule, again, similar to municipal elections. Those are the two requests that came from the city clerk. The other recommendations on this report, allowing neighborhood council members to work in their own neighborhood councils, that this was a separate motion that was introduced by the chair, as well as reporting back on whether or not the clerk could conduct the newly certified Westwood Neighborhood Council. So, it's sort of a combination. We had some original requests. The committee added some additional material to that, and that results in the combined report that is before you.
And so the fee you're requesting obviously is put forth because of our budget issues and budget cuts, and to add this other layer of work is going to require more personnel, more time. Is that the logical conclusion?
The logic is that in the interest of equality and the interest of an equitable voting experience, in the municipal election world, if people want to grieve or challenge, they have a process to do so. We think neighborhood councils should have that access also. In municipal elections, people can ask for a recount. We thought that that should be extended to the neighborhood council arena as well, but it is council's ultimate decision if they want to offer these resources to the neighborhood council system.
Madam Attorney?
Yeah, thank you. Gwen Poindexter, Assistant City Attorney. I was just listening, and I just want to add a little bit of historical background. The reason we are, that you would be requesting the city attorney to prepare an election challenge process is not creating a new one, per se, but to modify the existing language in the plan. The existing language in the plan provided for the city clerk to resolve the election challenges filed by neighborhood councils until an election challenge process that the Neighborhood Council Review Commission that had recommended could be implemented. It's taken this long to have that implementation done. The city clerk has come up with that process, and we're just now asking for the plan and the ordinance to be amended to make reference to the challenge process that the city clerk has already established.
So, that's one objective process that's reaching its maturation, if you will, because of the process and experiences, but we're hearing from a geographic-specific location is separate.
Correct.
So, the action we're taking now is not precedent-setting, it's just an involvement of a policy.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the queue is Mr. Alakon.
Members, I don't have a problem with the bulk of this report. I'm just concerned that we have an unfriendly amendment, and our two nearest members are not in agreement with regard to Westwood, and I think we can resolve this. I, for one, would like to see us be able to certify and have elections, you know, as much as we can. So, I guess the question is, with regard to Westwood, if this, can we have an election with the group of elections? If the report goes back to committee and comes back to council, at what point do we have a problem with the certification? I understand there's another certification coming in a month. That would we have to cut off at that point? At what point do we have to say, "We can't do any more elections for newly certified"?
I'll make the initial response, and then I'd like my election staff to fill you in with details. If you, one way that's kind of interesting to look at what we're dealing with here is we are administering 89 weddings, and that means that we scouted out the church, we hired caterers, we got the invitations printed. Right now, we're actually at the church waiting for the bride and groom. That's where we are, being that the first set of elections is less than 60 days away. To bring on To bring on a new neighborhood council would be to start at the very beginning, the invitations, the church location, so on and so forth. So to answer your question, is there a hard and fast day? The period that is, that we can operate these elections are, again, only March, April, May, and June. June 26 is our last day. So you have to figure, is there sufficient time to do all the work that needs to be done in order for an election to happen no later than June 26? Because by the ordinance that your body has adopted, that's my cutoff date.
So if we don't get an election, does that mean they're not going to have an election for two years?
That is correct, that is, that is correct.
That's not acceptable.
Please go ahead.
To quote the famous Janice Hahn.
May I just make one point, is that remember that the city charter regarding neighborhood councils does provide for either an election process or a selection process. So the selection process is actually just as legally legitimate as the election process. It just so happens that most neighborhood councils in the city prefer the election process.
Council members, I don't think it was ever the intent of this council in establishing the new rules relative to the city clerk conducting these elections, that we delay any neighborhood councils from being able to have an election for two years. That would be, I think it would be the worst message you could say, send to the community. So I think I would challenge all the members at the table and Mr. Kerkorian to come up with a solution, to ensure that there is an election process. Now, if they have to have an election in July, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that if we can figure that out. But if you're saying that we can't have an election if it's not before June 26, then I have a real problem. Now, I, to sort of paraphrase our former colleague Gilbert Lindsay, you know, I've got a friend, Paul Kay, and I've got another friend, Paul Kay, and I don't know where I'm going to land on this issue, but I'm going to vote with Paul Kay. But I'd rather that both Paul Kays agree, and we can come up with a solution so that we can conduct these elections and not have any neighborhood have to wait for two years for an opportunity. I'm actually more concerned about La Brea now than I am Westwood. Is La Brea just a hypothetical? Well, whatever other certifications come, we've got to have a process that they can have a singular election. I don't think, that was never the intent of this council.
Mr. Kerkorian for a second time, and then Mr. Corretts for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Alakon, first of all, no motion ever offered by my friend, Mr. Corretts, would ever be an unfriendly amendment. As far as I'm concerned, everything he does is friendly. But let me put this, let me just clarify this a little bit. What's before us now, the recommendation before us now, I think, is to do what you've just asked for, which is to have the clerk report to my committee on Tuesday about the feasibility of doing exactly what we're saying, adding Westwood to the list of elections that would be conducted this March, April, May, and June. That's it. All we're asking is that the report be made Tuesday so that we can decide then whether or not this is, in fact, feasible. I don't know, as I stand here, whether it can be done. I'd like it to be done. But I do know that there are time restrictions, there are fiscal restrictions in making late changes in the game. What we're asking is for the clerk to come back so that we can vet this in committee. I appreciate and respect your concern that it is unacceptable to go two years without an election. But if a neighborhood council is certified in December of this year, they will go nearly two years without an election. If it's certified in January of next year, they will go a significant amount of time without an election. At some point, we have to decide, this is the cutoff time when we can have elections or not, without calling a special election. Maybe we'll decide that a special election is appropriate. But, but we can't do that on the fly. We have to do it with the benefit of the input in committee of the clerk, who's going to tell us about the cost of it, the process of it, and so forth. And then I may very well agree that we can go forward, but I don't think that that's something that we can just assume we can do, and without regard to the fiscal and timing concerns and how this actually will work.
Mr. Corretts.
Well, I think the difference is, with my motion, instead of having them come to us on Tuesday and tell us why they can't do it, they'll come on Tuesday and tell us how they can do it. Now, to take the wedding analogy, it's possible because of this late date, the Westwood neighborhood council may have to drive to Las Vegas with a couple relatives and have its wedding in a chapel rather than send out the invitations. But if you wind up having to do it with a couple fewer steps and a little bit more on the cheat because it's late, then I think you do it. But to not have an election, but have this neighborhood council go forward anyway, I think would be rather unfortunate. In any way we can avoid that, I think would be a good thing.
Mr. Alakon.
Yeah, council members, I would remind us that the bulk of the neighborhood councils have been identified. There are communities, many communities, that have not embraced the neighborhood council opportunity and have not gone through the process. And it was always anticipated that there would be stragglers coming aboard as we move forward. It was never the intention of this council to delay elections for two years. You're talking about taking away a possibility for them to get resources that every other community gets. You're talking about them, if, in theory, we're talking about excluding those communities from the city's declared process, if we don't allow them to participate, I don't, I just don't understand it. So, no, I think we have to make a declaration that in those events, when a certification occurs in off-years, we have to make a special accommodation to ensure that they can have an election process, whether it be all the bells and whistles that are listed in this report, or whether it be a simplified version, a temporary simplified version. And that's how we got to get this done. Now, with regard to the first day that, of action, it's March 30. That's the first, the first thing, the distribution of the election procedures, the last day to do that is March 30, according to this schedule. So it seems to me that we, that we can, within two months, figure out what to do with Westwood. But I also still think that if somebody gets certified in July of this year, we shouldn't make them wait two years to have an election, we should come up with a simple alternative. And frankly, they can just do a vote of raising their hands and have a city clerk stand there and count them. You know, frankly, I would not be opposed to that, because I think it would be just about as effective as what we've got. Not, I'm not, I'm certainly not criticizing the city clerk, I'm just saying that I think the neighborhood councils would have just about equivalent representation as they do under this very formal and elaborate system. So, so let's try to figure this out. Let's not leave Westwood out, let's not leave any other community that doesn't have a neighborhood council out for two years or even one year. We want them to engage, and we want them to engage as quickly as possible.
Mr. Kerkorian.
Well, with respect, I'd like to thank council member Alakon and council member Corretts for making the argument in support of the recommendation that is, in fact, in front of us. So allow me to read it. "At the next meeting of the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, a report on the feasibility of including the newly-certified Westwood Neighborhood Council in the city clerk's upcoming 2010 neighborhood election cycle, and on a process by which new certified neighborhood councils will be included in the city clerk's neighborhood election process." That's exactly what we're asking the clerk to report on next Tuesday. We'll have an opportunity to vote on it then. That's what's on the agenda for Tuesday's meeting. So precisely, I think, the situation that my colleagues are asking us to deal with is exactly what the Education and Neighborhoods Committee will deal with on Tuesday. It's my hope that we will find a way to make this feasible. I hope that we will, because I fully agree that we shouldn't have delays, even if they are late to the party, even if they are late to the, to the wedding. They're clearly not having any cold feet. They want to go forward, they want to go ahead and tie the knot. And I say, let's encourage that if we can. But I at least want to know where we're going to do that, I want to know how much it's going to cost us to do that, I want to know how that's going to work by the person that we're entrusting and empowering with the obligation to administer that election. So once we know that, by all means, let's move forward. But if we're going to ask the clerk to administer these elections, in my view, we need to hear from the clerk as to how that's going to happen. That's all we're asking in this, in this recommendation.
Thank you. And do you know who the DJ is going to be? That's the most important part of any wedding. It's often overlooked. All right, with that, there are no other speakers on the queue. There is a hearing committee, if there's no motion to reopen the public hearing, we have a vote before us. Mr. Corretts had, amendment accepted as friendly, if there's no objections, then that, Mr. Corretts' motion, was that, is there any objection to it?
It's not.
Nope, there's no objection, okay. So then it's, then it's accepted as friendly?
He was friendly.
So it's accepted as friendly, so as amended, we have...
It's not, no, it's not.
Oh, it's not, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
No, that...
I can't quite hear you guys, I'm sorry, over there. So there is an objection to it, so we'll take a vote on it?
I think he said he accepted the author as friendly, but the amendment, no.
Got you. If, if I may, if I may.
Yeah, of course, Mr. Kerkorian, please.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. But perhaps we can ask Mr. Corretts to restate the motion to see whether it could be friendly, because the way he argued it, it may, in fact, be.
Okay. Mr. Corretts, if you'd like to clarify? Just how friendly are you, Mr. Corretts?
To delete the reference to studying the feasibility of conducting elections in Westwood, instead to direct the city clerk's office to report back to the committee with its plan for conducting the neighborhood council elections.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's, that, as stated, then that would not be a friendly amendment.
Okay. All right, Ms. Hahn?
I mean, I sort of, sort of feel like this Paul Kay, Mr. Muscleman, you know, that I like to say, too, you know, I think, as Richard said, it was never intent to let a neighborhood council go two years without having the opportunity to even have an election. And I would much rather have you say how we're going to conduct it. So I would be supportive of that if that amendment doesn't pass, and, there you go. And we just look at a study. What I'm asking is, is one of the things you'll be looking at June is for, in these off-year certifications, that we go back to maybe giving them the opportunity to run their own election during that time? Is that something you're looking at, or is that completely off the table? Because I would think that would be...
Yeah.
A way that...
We would name all of council's options...
Okay, so you would look at that?
We would name all of council options, that it could conceivably, at the council's pleasure, be taken back from the clerk and back to the neighborhood councils or to Dunn, as well as any of a number of other kinds of suggestions. I mean, we'll, we'll lay them all out for you.
Right. And, I mean, I think that's something we just got to look at. And I think it's something, again, it's kind of a, an emergency situation, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a fast marriage, and I think that might be one of the things we look at. I sent you a letter recently, June, I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at it, but I know one of the neighborhood councils is scheduled to have an election on June 8, which is also our...
Election day.
...primary for the state. Didn't know if you wanted to look at that, it's maybe changing that a week on either side, because I feel like that might cause some confusion with people to have those kinds of important elections kind of on the same day, and people might not have a clear understanding of...
I did see your letter, and we are looking into it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have before us first, in reverse order, Mr. Corretts' motion. Madam Clerk, is everybody clear on Mr. Corretts' motion? He's re-clarified that for us. Anybody who needs further clarification on Mr. Corretts' motion? It's to report back with a plan for a vote in the Westwood Neighborhood Council, as opposed to a report on options for the, for the Westwood Neighborhood Council. Okay? Yes, Mr. Parks, did you have a clarification?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, are both motions bringing this information back to committee next week?
Yes, both would. The further, Mr. Kerkorian moved the entire committee report, Mr. Corretts' motion before that wouldn't preclude the rest of the committee report, it would edit one portion of it where he deleted, I think, one word in the...
What number is that?
Number four, I think it was, is that correct? Amendmentation four? I'm going off the memory, but, which one?
Four A.
Four A. So it would delete a report on feasibility to report on how, how an election would be conducted. Okay? Now, we have a separate motion just on that, just on that, no need to, there's nothing to bifurcate, it's a, it's a single change. Okay? Everybody ready? Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes, one no.
Okay. Now, we have the rest of the committee report, the, please open the roll, as amended, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay. That committee report will be approved as amended, and we'll come back for reports back shortly. Thank you all very much. If we can go to the other items called special, please?
Item four called special, please.
Yes, fourth with, without objection. Sorry, item number four, John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward?
Item number four, again, concerns the stimulus bill. As you know, I don't haunt this meeting, you don't find me here all the time. I'm here to drive traffic to HollywoodHighlands.org, where we're not under censorship. But, as you know, the second stimulus bill is dead in the Senate, along with the Obama's presidency. You're not going to get the second stimulus bill. People in Massachusetts made that decision for us. Eric told you here at the meeting, HollywoodHighlands.org, where you can go on the internet to see the stimulus bills. Now, if you think I'm here to play with myself, I'm not. Because at the last meeting, when we brought this issue up of unaccountability concerning the stimulus bill, Councilman Corretts ordered a special report, and he used the word coherent report on exactly where we stand on the stimulus bill. So in other words, we don't get up here to enjoy ourselves. I get up here to make you pay attention and to change things. And as you know, I've been doing it for a quarter of a century, off and on, and teaching for a quarter of a century, too. I don't live here, okay? HollywoodHighlands.org, if you're interested in where the child porn is being shown on Hollywood Boulevard.
Sir, I'm sorry, that's out of...
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Excuse me, Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
I can't hear you, one sec. Mr. Rogers.
And after that, will be Matt Dowd.
Okay, yes, thank you, Zuma Dog. And my qualification speaking here is I am the self-appointed Quality and Productivity Czar for City of Los Angeles. It's a volunteer position and will have no impact on the budget. And I'd like to say I'll be talking about this item very much in detail all weekend at LADailyBlog.com, as I blog live through my streaming webcam. Now, we're talking about the economic fiscal stimulus money. Now, I need to explain to the city council the difference between economic development and public improvements. Because somehow, even though the state of California is going broke and bankrupt and can't provide services and everybody's getting fired, and even though the city of LA the same, Felipe Fuentes pulls $3 million out of the sky the day before Christmas, and Cardenas' staff feels like working through Christmas to get $3 million money for economic development. And he pulled a fast one on the city, and now it will require $1 million matching funds. I'd like to, economic development, this stimulus money, is to jumpstart innovative product and services in the city to help stimulate jobs and tax revenue. Public improvement does not count. Public improvement does not count. It is not to pay city workers to do the work that they're supposed to be doing anyway because you squandered all the money. And I've got a real problem here, things like Barack Obama is going to be very disappointed...
Mind lowering your voice just a little bit? Thank you.
Barack Obama is going to be very disappointed when he sees the job numbers, and in the end of January, when he sees the budget report with the revenue, he's going to say, what happened to the stimulus money? It's supposed to be for job creation. Well, I'll tell you what happened, Tony Cardenas took $3 million, and then $1 million of matching funds, and he puts it for an earthquake, some kind of earthquake corridor in all of this midst, and that's not economic development. Barack Obama, please investigate. Barack Obama, please investigate.
Matt Dowd is our last speaker on this one.
Yes, thank you, and it's only two minutes, and a lot of these things, they, there's a lot of information, so do go to LADailyBlog, because if you're a council member here and you really want to see what we're saying and find out where we're going with everything...
Thank you, sir, that points were made, if you can get to the American Recovery Reform Act, thank you.
Thank you, yes, and let's put that... Thank you, yes, and let's put that in the rules. Look, I want to talk about downtown Los Angeles now. The hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of luxury condos, see, I was reading up about Morello Maddox, one of the mayor's favorite campaign contributors, and, because we're talking about potential bankruptcy and selling assets and the financial crisis, and it's all related discussions. And see, Morello Maddox, they've got a lot--
Could you please make the relation for us, then?
With which?
With the American Recovery and Recovery Act, please.
Right.
The money goes to Morello Maddox, and then the city goes bankrupt.
Okay, look, I want to talk about the situation downtown, how you've let these developers run amok. That's why we need this money, to fix all the holes, all, you know, like, it's all about the global economy, this, this is related discussions, you're just trying to put me off my train of thought. Restructuring everything, you're going to have to do that here. And that's what they're doing, but everything's worthless, all the pension reform, they, all the pension people, they're going to have to renegotiate all their pensions pretty soon.
Thank you, sir. I have to say, you're still off topic of, of this item, but, but thank you. Unless you have anything else to say about the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, specifically? Sorry, Mr. Dogg, could you please lower your voice so we can hear the speaker?
Okay, yes, and my other number-one thing is, is we want the council members who are getting this money to get up and tell us exactly, specifically, explicitly, where the money's being spent and who it's being spent on. And there's a word for it that you love to use, but you never actually practice, transparency.
Thank you, and for all members of the public, that information is available for you, recovery.lacity.org. Our meetings before, our Friday council meetings also detail a running tab, and we post up the specifics of all the money that has been allocated. Some of that has not yet come from DC, but we are at $586 million as of this past week in federal recovery money, is the most recent of which, and they'll come to council shortly. Our $7 million for broadband access in our libraries and our parks for rewiring, which was a competitive grant, and $100 million for the neighborhood stabilization program for homes that have gone into foreclosure. And for folks that know of homes in their neighborhood that have gone through that foreclosure, please visit the recovery.lacity.org website, or the Los Angeles Housing Department website, to learn how those homes can be brought out of foreclosure and habitated by folks to help our communities out. With that, let's, there's no action required on that, let's go to the next item, please.
Item five called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Arnold Sachs on item number five.
Good afternoon, thank you. Arnold Sachs. REAP program. I was just wondering what it would take to report somebody for a REAP violation, how you get, put somebody in there. There was an article in the LA Times on Saturday, January 16th, and it shows a photo of a home here, and the accompanying article states that the neighbors think the home has been abandoned, and nobody's lived there for three years. The homeowner stated that he thought a vagrant was moving in there--
Sorry, sir, we're talking about the 11342 West Tierra Street specifically, it's not a general discussion of REAP, unless it influences this particular one, so if you could please talk about that?
I'm just looking to find out how you, how you would report somebody for REAP. And then, if you report people for REAP, or this person who's been reported for REAP, they would be able to hire an attorney to represent themselves at a hearing. My concerns would be if they wanted to hire attorney Fred Wucher, because he represents two council members--
Mr. President, he's still off topic, these hypothetical exercises are outside--
Sorry, sir, if it's a general public comment, this would be appropriate, but if you don't have any comments on the specific West Era project that's before us, then--
Wait, you did agree--
As a last warning, sir, you can, I'll give you one more chance to make comments that are, adhere to our Brown Act and our state law.
I'm, I'm trying to say that the person who owns this property could hire an attorney. You do agree with that. My point is, is that if they chose to hire a particular attorney that's representing city council members and city official holders, would that be a conflict of interest? Because they can hire any attorney they want. But if it's a conflict of interest, who would represent him? Couldn't you get the city council, the city, city's attorney office to represent him?
Thank you, sir. Zuma Dogg is our next speaker, after that is Matt Dowd. Mr. Dogg is our next speaker, sir.
Well, you're explaining differences to me. I mean, it doesn't make sense, I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Dogg?
Do you agree--
We can please make sure that he can speak.
Yes, please do not append upon my free speech, Mr. Sachs. Yes, I'm talking about rent escrow, and here's why I don't want any of these cases entered into REAP. So I am talking about these specific cases, I don't want them entered into REAP, because first of all, the city has a bad habit of deeming these people slum lords. Now, true that there is much of that in the city, however, they do it, first of all, like a tenant, they can kick a hole in the wall, or they can, you know, tear down a railing, and then they call in, and then you crack down on them, so they do that to kind of, you make trouble for the landlords a lot. And then also, I find that REAP is vindictive and a racketeering fraud factory in the way that they go up to the mom-and-pop property owners that are housing the good, decent people in this city, and they tack on all these different fines and fees. So I think that in many of these cases that you see here today, it's not work that really needs to be done, but just things you're trying to do to tack on to the good, decent property owners that are housing the good, decent people affordably, so that they can't comply, and then you keep putting them back over and over, then they can't afford to run the property anymore, you make it too impossible, and then you end, they end up losing it--
Thank you, sir, if you can bring it back to this one, if you can.
Like, right here--
Do you have any knowledge on West Tierra Street, if you could bring it back to that, please?
Okay, on West Tierra Street, I want to make sure that you do not give this to a preferred developer of your own campaign contribution nature, and then kick out good, decent people in affordable housing, and turn it into a million-dollar condo that people can't afford, that's plummeting in value, and the entire city, nobody can afford to live here. Because that's what happens on a day-to-day basis, and you really have no way of knowing whether this is the one that's good or bad. So I'm just here to say, we need a moratorium, don't worry, the city can go without it right now. You, you don't need to put these people in REAP. Why don't you give them the benefit of the doubt? Here's what I'm saying, put these, don't put these people in REAP, give them the benefit of the doubt--
Thank you very much, sir. And as clarification under REAP, apartments can't be converted into condominiums, the tenants by law get to stay. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you, yes, let me clarify all of that now, because these are properties actually going off the REAP program right now. And that means they're in compliance, but Zuma Dogg, he makes a great point out of all that. I understood the point. See, a lot of properties in the city of Los Angeles, they're not the greatest, most beautiful luxury property. Of course, they have problems, but that's what makes them affordable. You, obviously, yeah, these, these properties that I'm talking about, they have housing department violations possibly, they may be minor, they may be major. So the city, this is one time you really should use a lot of discretion, not like you do at public comment, like you need to get out there and go, okay--
Sorry, sir, you're off topic.
Completely on topic. I'm talking about how you go around to these properties with the housing department, and you issue citations, is that not what happens? Yes. And these properties are being released now, because they've come up to code. My point is, a lot of properties in the city are just below the code standard, and that's what makes them affordable right now, so you're going to have to tell the people who complain, because that's what happens, tenants complain, "Am I wrong?" Tenants call the city and go, "Oh, I've got problems with my property." And the landlord won't fix it, so the housing department comes over and says, "Oh, that's a citation, you're on the REAP program, fix the property." And then when they fix the property, they come off the REAP program, so tell me that's not what we're talking about here.
All right, that will close our comments for this item. We can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. If we can take up special one, please. Mr. City Attorney on the findings?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has been advised that a resolution is required for city council to state its opposition to a recent FCC order regarding preemption of local wireless siting proposals. Immediate action is required for the city to file comments before the impending deadline. Council must first make findings pursuant to government co-section 54954.2, before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, on the findings, let's please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
As before us, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. On this resolution, I just want to make a technical amendment to the resolution. On the last paragraph, we should strike the language "and intervene in the appeal of the order pending in the United States Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit." We should repeal that that could be misinterpreted as, as more aggressive than, than the effort that we'd like to put forth. So as an amendment to the motion.
Okay?
Okay. And also, I'd just like to remind ourselves, council members, this is a local government issue, something we should definitely weigh in on, and in addition to that, the city of Los Angeles is well in line, our opinion seems to be very well in line with consumer groups, et cetera, that are also opining on this when it comes to protecting not only local governments' responsibilities and rights, but also the, the benefit to the public directly. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Explain what we're talking about here, please.
Yes, thank you. William Imperial Information Technology Agency telecommunications regulatory officer. The city council in 2008 agreed and passed a resolution opposing a petition that was filed with the Federal Communications Commission by the Wireless Association, asking the Federal Communications Commission to preempt local control of its public rights-of-way, meaning the above-ground facility ordinance that the city would, has in place, would be preempted and placed in the national authority, under the national authority of the FCC. The FCC in 2008, I'm sorry, on November 18th of 2009, as set forth in the resolution, issued an order, in part agreeing with the CTIA Association, the Wireless Association, that a shot clock should be put in place to allow the Wireless Association to place its cell towers in the public rights-of-way on a, on a time limitation basis, thereby, in, in a certain way, preempting the city's above-ground facility ordinance. And that, in and of itself, is something that we're asking the council to take a position on in filing in favor of the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors on the TOA. They filed a petition for reconsideration of that order to the FCC recently. Comments are due today, we already have a draft prepared to be filed this afternoon, if the council so agrees, in the resolution, to continue to oppose that order and to ask the FCC to amend its shot clock limitations that are being imposed upon the cities, in the nation, by the way.
So basically, okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm just trying to hear your common sense here. You're basically saying, "We don't, and I don't want to preempt our rights at all." Frankly, I think local communities and local cities should have power over this issue. Of course, they go to Washington, they play their politics, they take it away from us. I've been worried about safety and health issues, and I've also been worried about aesthetics. This is us basically saying, "Hey, no, we have rights on this as well."
That's correct, your position is absolutely right.
Great, great, thank you, Tony, for bringing it out here, and obviously, it's a no-brainer if you care about your communities, and you care about people's input and character scale of neighborhoods, and safety issues and health issues. Thank you.
Mr. S. The language that's being proposed, and you've just articulated the various points, from a land use point of view, when we look at discretionary measures, as we go through the various neighborhood councils and committees, can you share with us what would be the implications of that?
The FCC order is immediately in effect at this time. It's already being looked at by the Bureau of Engineering, that reviews these applications, and the effect of it is that if the city does not ask for clarification and deem an application incomplete within 30 days, it must be approved within 90 days. So with that regard to what the neighborhood council might want to do, or the council might want to do, and that's for colocation, meaning wherever we already have a cell tower, another cell tower can be placed either adjacent to or on it, and with regard to a new application for placement of a cell tower in a non-colocation place, that the shot clock is 150 days under those same guidelines.
So at this time, the FCC tells us, "We cannot determine location, because it does not have a health impact." And it's, they're given that by right.
Correct, or aesthetic.
Does that change that posture?
Yeah, the, I don't believe the FCC's actions right now are changing the way health effects are viewed. As, as you know, if installation complies with FCC regulations concerning its, you know, emission levels, we're statutorily precluded by the Telecommunications Act from regulating based on that. What this FCC action right now is doing, and that we're opposing, is it, it sets up time limits by which the city is allowed to act. So when we look at these things carefully, and go through our committee processes to make informed decisions as to whether ultimately to say yes or no, that, that takes some time for that consideration. But these, these are imposing time limits, our typical processes may in fact already fit within these time limits, but it's an artificial limitation that wouldn't serve the city's interests. Also, there's a real big issue as to when does that time limit start to run? So you're going to find people submitting applications that aren't complete, unless we take some action, you may actually start the clock running when the application isn't even complete. So it's basically to bring back to the city the authority to look at these pursuant to the city's own processes.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to this, in that to report back, we also be sent to planning and land use, given its discretionary measures, our planning police powers as a local government, and understanding what administrative dynamic will mean, if indeed we have these limitations.
Yeah, absolutely, and what, you know, in the world of cell transmission equipment, you know, as you know, these things can be put in the right-of-way, you know, within the parking area, they can be put on utility poles, they can also be put on rooftops, and on the rooftop installations, which are not in the right-of-way, those do go through the planning department processes, conditional use permits, et cetera. So it's clearly within that authority as well.
So that would be a friendly amendment, can I have a second on that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kucorian?
Just a quick question for, for staff. The FCC ruling was on November 18th. When was the, when was the Court of Appeals ruling?
Do you have that? The, the appeal that is referenced in the resolution is actually an appeal of the FCC's order of November 18th by the city of Arlington, Texas. So it's a direct appeal to the city court of appeals, because that's the way the proceedings go at that level.
I don't believe a ruling has been issued yet, they just have initiated the process.
Appeal was filed with the, with the Fifth Circuit.
Correct.
Okay. So, with respect, why is it that the FCC ruling was issued on November 18th, and we're getting this by special motion on the day that comments are, are due, without it having gone before the Plumb Committee for vetting before it came to us?
Council has previously taken action on this regulatory effort. This coming to you today is, is really sort of a belt and suspenders approach. We technically had already been instructed to make filings in connection with this particular FCC action. What we're here is to basically file further comments, because one, interest group, NTOA, has filed for reconsideration. So it's really, it's something that the council's already looked at, we're just coming to you again for sort of a, an extra level of notification and assurance that you, that the city council continues to want to be involved.
Okay, now, you have to forgive me, I'm the new guy here.
No, that's, that's an excellent question.
So is it the case, then, that the council has previously taken a position consistent with this as part of its federal legislative agenda?
Yes.
Is it also the case, then, that the position that we're taking to file--
Further comments?
Well, and also to intervene? I assume with the proposal that's before us, is to intervene as a party in the appeal, is that right?
Yeah, at, at the beginning of this, that, that language was requested to be deleted.
That was stricken, okay, that was stricken, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kucorian. We've got speaker cards on this. Arnold Sachs is our first speaker.
Yeah.
After Mr. Sachs will be Mr. Walsh.
So from the understanding of the comments, you're not going to take part in the appeal, you're just going to make comments. This doesn't make sense. You got up here, Mr. President, and spoke about LA being a leader, the city being a leader, the council being full of leaders, and yet, when it comes to-- the council being full of leaders, and yet, when it comes to taking part in a beneficial lawsuit that would help the public and the city, well, we're not going to take part in the lawsuit, we're just going to send our pat on the back and let you know, "We're behind you, we're leading, leading from behind." That's your position. This reeks of the action taken when the state moved to eliminate local cable access programming. Instead of maintaining the quality and the level of programming for the public, the state decided to lower the standards for everybody, for all the cable companies. This is smoke, and if it's smoke, this is a city council favorite action. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Walsh, after Mr. Walsh has met down.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. You're doing an excellent job. Staff is doing an excellent job. You're protecting us against the FCC. You know, everything you do isn't wrong. If I said everything you did is wrong, then I'd be crazy, wouldn't I? Some things you do are right, some things you do are wrong. And you know what? I'm not playing with myself, which means I kick back time. I don't stay here till the two minutes are up.
And sir, could you please use metaphors of a non-sexual nature?
Vote the way staff has told you. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. That is a last reminder on metaphors of a sexual nature, please, or references to sexually unprotected speech. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. You have one minute left, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, and it's tough to know without the list of the banned words, but anyway. It's not America anymore, but the FCC, see, I love this item. This is exactly the kind of thing that I'm sure you feel now, how I feel, when somebody just tries to overrule you, there's no, there's no way. And then, look, at the last minute, you've got to put in comments about this. See, as long as you're federally compliant, that's the number-one thing in America. So, you're just going to run around and chase yourselves around in another big old circle here, trying to make the court or a superior ruling body. It's like telling the FAA how to do something. Santa Monica found out that doesn't work. So, the city of Los Angeles, ha-ha, somebody bigger than you is telling you what to do. How does it feel?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma Dogg. And he is going to pass. That will close our public comment. Ms. Hahn, did you want to speak on this?
Just wanted to add one final comment, and I'm really glad we're doing this. It makes an important statement about local control. I, you know, we have this delicate balance between people wanting better cell reception and having these awful towers located in residential neighborhoods, close to schools. I just came through a very contentious issue in San Pedro. T-Mobile put up a tower. Once everyone got mobilized to oppose it, they had said, "Gee, if you'd only, you know, come out sooner, we would have been more willing to relocate this tower." So, to shorten this time period on when we actually can have this public outreach is really a mistake. We want to have, you know, more transparency on these issues, more time to outreach to our neighborhoods on these issues. And we really, even though sometimes, you know, we're limited in what we can do, I think it's really important that we send the message that shortening this time period is a big mistake, and it really already exasperates the situation between neighborhoods and these cell towers. We want to work together with these telecommunications companies and find reasonable locations where they can erect these towers. And by shortening this time period, I think that's going to make it even more difficult. So, I'm glad we're doing this today. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item six called special for cards.
All right, item six. We have Mr. Walsh first. And Mr. Dowd has used his time up for today. After that is Mr. Dogg, who has one minute left. After Mr. Walsh.
On the Parkman Triangle project, it's important that you know that this money comes from the pipeline franchise revenue. You understand there are pipelines under LA. They ruptured during the last big earthquake here in the city of Los Angeles. It's very, very serious matter. And instantly, I have a video game in my pocket right now, and I'm going back to play.
You could bring it to the Parkman. Sorry, sir, we have the Parkman Triangle Park before us. Mr. Dogg, would you have any comments on this Triangle Park?
Yes, regarding this project here, I first need to start off by quote, first of all, I'm here under the authority of self-appointed quality and productivity czar for the city of Los Angeles. And I was at a quality and productivity meeting, and the first thing I want to do regarding this item is quote, "Cao Miguel Santana. The city of Los Angeles will be a pay-as-you-go city." In other words, if you don't have the money for the project, the project will not be done. What we're seeing here is a lot of stuff being slipped under the wire before the crackdown comes down. So, what I'm here to say is, please do not take on a park project when you're talking about things like not being able to have police, fire, and emergency response vehicles responsive to your needs, not being able to meet your financial obligations as a city through your accounting department that you no longer will have, through having to sell off all the city assets until you'll have no more revenue ever again for the city of the history, and you want to take on a park project and do some demolition and construction in conjunction with some racketeering.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. He will be last to comment for this one. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And then, finally, number seven, Mr. Walsh is the last speaker. Is Mr. Walsh here? Seems to have left, so we will go ahead and prepare the roll on seven and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And there is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember LeBonds requests to arrive at noon on Tuesday, January 26th, for city business, and this meets council policy.
Okay, he has excuse?
And the desk is clear.
All right, just one announcement, colleagues. I know it was alluded to the decommissioning of the USS Los Angeles tomorrow. The names, for security reasons, had to have been prescreened for that, so folks that might have listened in, who might just be showing up down there in San Pedro, that will not be open to the public if you've not contacted through the Navy League, the naval forces that will be there. So, I just wanted to let members of the public know, but I know it'll be well-covered by media and by many members of the public who have been screened for that as well. So, the commander wanted to make sure that folks knew that it wasn't open to the public if they hadn't been screened. And any other announcements, colleagues? If no other announcement, do you have an announcement, Mr. Rosenthal? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sitting in the first row of the council chambers, colleagues, are two gentlemen from Germany, Michael and Alex. They're traveling our great city and our great nation from Germany. They're traveling the world, and they've been to 16 countries already. And what they're doing is, they're craftsmen. They are, one is a carpentry, the other one is a framer. And they have come to Los Angeles, and what they do is, they interact with the greatest, be it carpenter or framers, and they spend a few months apprenticing in that experience. They get a few bucks from that, and then they move on to the next. This is a tradition in Austria, Switzerland, and Germany. It has been going on for 800 years. And these two young gentlemen here are from Germany, and I just wanted to welcome them to our city council.
Thank you and welcome. Good to have you here. I know if Mr. LeBonds was here, he'd give a long speech.
That would have been him.
I was worried that was the new uniform for the sergeants-at-arms, but I'm glad I got that clarified. All right. With that, any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I have everybody please rise for adjourning motions? And I know Mr. Alakon has an adjourning motion to begin. I'd like to recognize him, and we'll come around the horseshoe.
First of all, let me recognize Tomasa Diaz-Nevadas. Tomasa is a longtime friend of my family. She actually grew up with my father. She passed at the age of 90, and she was even born in El Paso, like my father was. But they spent the vast majority of their life, including their childhood, in a vario in North Hollywood called Orcasitas. Orcasitas was a, was a famous, not famous, was a landowner, and he used to have a ranch, and he owned about half of the San Fernando Valley. And one of the, one of the varios on the ranches was Orcasitas. That's where my father emerged out of. And Tomasa was a very close friend. In fact, her nephew is my best friend out of high school, and so we go way back. She passed away from natural causes, surrounded by family. She was born on September 19th in 1919. That's 191990, in El Paso, Texas, to Urcolana and Alberto Diaz. She was one of 14 children. And in 1940, she married Alfred Nevadas. They had four children, Alfred Jr., Ruth, Helen, and Frank. Tomasa was also very involved at the Holy Family Episcopal Church in North Hollywood. This little church is very special to me because my grandparents, my grandfather used to maintain the church when I was a little boy. And my grandparents actually lived in the kitchen of the church, a very small area, no bigger than eight by eight, when my grandparents were struggling. So, I have very fond memories of this church, and still today, we run a Christmas gift giveaway program. Well, at the funeral, I learned that Tomasa was very, very involved in the church, and in many ways, had assisted members of the congregation, and she was always a participant in the church activities. And as I said, it's a very, very small community church. They even have a stained glass window that is dedicated to the Diaz family for all their contributions to this very small church. She loved making tortillas and dancing. She leaves behind two daughters, six grandchildren, 10 great-grandchildren, one great-great-grandchild. She was a loving mother, grandmother, sister, aunt, and community volunteer and Holy Family. She will be truly missed. I want to send my personal condolences to the family that has been very, very close to me, and we wish them all as long a life as Tomasa. With that, I'd like to move to a second one, Abraham Estrada, who is the father of a former deputy of mine, Ramiro Estrada. Abraham was 89 when he passed away from heart failure. He was also surrounded by loved ones. He was the father to my former employer, as I mentioned, Ramiro Estrada. He was born on October 14th, 1920. And I have to tell you, I always knew that Ramiro's parents were from Mexico, but I assumed they were born in Mexico. And it turns out that his father, Ramiro's father, was born in the same place as Michael Jackson in Gary, Indiana. At the age of five, they moved back to Mexico, to Chirán, Michoacan, Mexico. They lived in Michoacan and Guadalajara. In 1945, he married Dolores Calderón. They had seven daughters and four sons. In 1970, they moved their family to San Fernando. He worked at Litton Industries in Van Nuys for 20 years. He also repaired appliances in his spare time. He loved music and good food. He was very culturally oriented. In fact, he learned how to speak his Indian ancestry language, Purupetcha. And this is the first time I've ever heard of that language. But he, and I even, we pulled it up, and it's a very complicated language, certainly to those who don't speak Purupetchan. But he was very proud, and I always knew Ramiro and his ex-wife Maggie, who still works for me, they were always very culturally oriented. In fact, I met them when they were ballet folk article dancers. I'm sure that emerges from Abraham. He was known for helping the needy and always encouraging everyone to better their lives and get an education to accomplish their goals. Obviously, he was very proud of his heritage. He leaves behind his wife Dolores, his daughters Socorro, Emma, Dolores, Celia, Patricia, Erandira, Sochil, his sons Felipe, Ramiro, Mario, Abraham Jr., 32 grandchildren, 14 great-grandchildren, and two sisters. He was a great husband, father, grandfather, brother, and he will be truly missed by all his family. Finally, I have an adjourning motion, quite different. You know, it's always so sad when somebody dies at an early age. In this case, I'm talking about somebody who worked at the East Valley Animal Shelter, died of natural causes on Sunday, January 17th. His name was Ben Peavy, and he died at the age of 28. And so, it's very traumatic, not only for his family, but also for his coworkers at the animal shelter. In fact, Mr. Corretts, the cat that you gave away was dying, and Mr. Peavy brought that cat back to life. I understand it hasn't been adopted, and so we're hoping that in Ben's name, somebody will take on this kitty who was given a second chance, and maybe we can even call that kitty Ben. But I'm a friend of his family. His father was a lieutenant at San Fernando PD, and we did a lot of work on gangs, particularly when I worked in the criminal prosecution office for Mayor Bradley. But we had had many different instances of having to work together on various projects since that time. And I'm very, very sad. His father's a wonderful police officer, and he now serves as the head investigator for the Los Angeles County Public Defender's Office in Lancaster. So, we want to send our regards to them. Ben was an especially compassionate young man who cared deeply about both animals and people. His quick wit and great one-liners had a positive and uplifting effect on his fellow employees. Most of all, Ben's good-hearted, gentle, caring nature endeared him to everyone who met him, his coworkers, the public he served. With such patience and kindness, and especially the animals in our shelters, we'll truly miss Ben. Ben had four pets, two cats, and two turtles, in addition to the animals he cared for at the shelter. As a tribute to Ben, we're hoping that this little cat will also be adopted. So, the service was held at 1:00 PM on Thursday, January 21st, yesterday, at Eternal Valley in Santa Clarita. Again, it is so sad when somebody dies at such a young age, particularly, I believe it was a heart attack situation. He, along with his father, Dan Peavy, he also leaves his sister Ashley and brother Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. President, colleagues, we're adjourning in memory of Gerald Lawrence McCabe, who was born in Long Beach on January 30th, 1927. After graduating from Long Beach Polytech High School, he served in the Navy during World War II. He earned a bachelor's degree at UCLA and a master's degree at Cal State Long Beach, both in fine arts. After graduating, McCabe became a furniture designer with a passion for woodworking and love of music. He opened a custom furniture business in Santa Monica in the mid-1950s. His first wife, Marcell Berman, was a successful folk singer, and soon, her friends were bringing their instruments to McCabe and asked him to repair them. That inspired him to open up McCabe's guitar shop on Pico Boulevard. In the earliest days, the store played a critical role in the evolution of Southern California folk music community. The narrow storefront became a magnet for folk fans and musicians who had few other places to gather. It was a place to find songbooks and folkway albums, get a guitar repaired, or sample a new instrument. Well-known musicians often stopped by McCabe's guitar store, including my dear friend Arlo Guthrie, and I had gone in there with Arlo, who would get his guitars always tuned there because this guy knew what he was doing. As the stature of McCabe's store grew and its ambition expanded into offering music lessons, and then concerts, under the McCabe Partners Walter Camp and Bob Riskin, its founder kept much of his focus on a design career that became increasingly prominent. With folk music popularity growing, business was booming in 1963, but McCabe was concentrating on his furniture design, and eventually sold his interest in 1986. McCabe designs were revered by mid-century design collectors for his elegant fusion of modern lines, precision, journeying, and a craftsman eye for the beauty of wood, glass, and steel. McCabe restored and sailed a tugboat, built a home in Santa Monica Canyon, that's in our district, the 11th district, taught design at area universities and art schools, became a became a yoga instructor, and repaired Citroen automobiles. McCabe's work was featured often in The Times Weekly Home Magazine and was regularly showcased in the Pasadena Art Museum series of California design exhibits. McCabe lived and worked at studios in Venice for most of his career, then moved to San Pedro in the late nineteen nineties. He was diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease in two thousand and four, and he soon moved to Eugene to be closer to his daughters. McCabe passed away Sunday in Eugene, Oregon, two days after suffering a heart attack. He was eighty-two years old. He survived by his daughter Hallie and Molly McCabe, his sister Janet Owens, and two grandchildren. A celebration of his life will be held on January thirtieth at Haley McCabe's home in Eugene, and a celebration in Los Angeles will be announced. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Stephanie Orduna, a young eighteen-year-old who passed away Monday, January eighteenth, because of a car accident. She worked for the Community Development Department as a community administrative support worker. She worked at the Cypress Park Family Source Center. She was full of energy and was always willing to help. She recently assisted our office in our annual northeast holiday party by registering children for gifts. She survived by her father, Manuel Hernandez, and her mom, Sonia Velasco, as well as her five siblings. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like for the council to adjourn in memory of Erica Ann Tabacznik. She was a bright, warm, and caring person and a distinguished attorney here in Los Angeles, who passed away on January fourteenth after a two-year bout with cancer. She survived by her daughters Lily and Miranda, and her high school sweetheart to whom she was married for more than thirty years, Mark Siegel, who many of us know and is a friend to many of us. Mark, of course, was a deputy to Joel Wax. He was a consultant for city employee labor unions. He published a newsletter called City Watch, created the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, and helped to found the Citywide Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, and currently works for Ask Me Council Thirty-Six. And in all those efforts and countless others, Erica was always his remarkable and knowledgeable spouse and partner, a loving, sturdy, and helpful ally to him, and a delight to everybody that knew her. And there's a memorial that's being held tomorrow at ten AM at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery, and I have a few flyers here if you want to pick them up with more details. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that, for sure.
Yes, we could have all members.
We're very sorry, Mark, and Erica was a remarkable woman. Colleagues, if you'll join me in one final adjourning motion for a friend of our own city, Clerk Maria Koncierich. Catherine Cutrell was born in Los Angeles on October twenty-fifth, nineteen fourteen, to Charles and Frances Whitehead. She passed away on January, I think, twenty-first, two thousand and ten. Charles, her father, was the chief police nurse at that time until his retirement in the nineteen thirties. Graduate of Bishop Connery High School, class of nineteen thirty-two, Catherine married Alfred Cutrell, who served on the Los Angeles Fire Department from nineteen thirty-seven till nineteen sixty-seven. Their six children were all employees of the city, last of whom is Julie Cutrell, who will soon retire from the Department of General Services. Catherine, who died on January twenty-first, lived her final years in Las Vegas, but remained proud of her Los Angeles heritage, and certainly for her daughter Julie and the rest of the family. We remember your mother, and may she rest in peace. With that, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll. We'll next be in session this coming Tuesday.